All right, good evening. We are reconvening this evening's meeting, the February 14th council meeting. Kathy, would you like to lead the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, great.
All right, tonight we have a special presentation and a proclamation, and I think A.J. Pullen is here tonight from People Like Me Project in representing the Central Ohio Honors Event. Do I see him here? Okay, hello. Welcome, Mr. Pullen. How are you? Good. This is quite a nice event that's coming up, and your project, is this working? Yeah, you can hear me, okay. And your People Like Me Project is very special. And so the city has this proclamation we'd like to give to you. The people, whereas the People Like Me Project will host their Central Ohio Honors Event 2022 in Dublin on February 18th, 2022. And whereas the mission of Ohio's honors, honors events is to recognize the achievements of African Americans in the community that are not only speaking of change, but are making positive impact within the community. And whereas honors events recognizes the achievements of African Americans in the Central Ohio and Miami Valley communities who make a positive impact within their community. And whereas the 2022 honors event will recognize the following outstanding community leaders: Gina Watts, religion; Dr., and excuse me if I don't say this correctly, Dr. Oli Toye? All right, health and wellness; Judge Terry Jamison, lifetime achievement; Luke Fedlam, business; Greg Jefferson, trailblazer; Dr. Talisa Dixon, education; Judge LaShiel Stroud, justice; Yolanda Harris, media; Tiffany Warren, education; Tim Brown, community service. And whereas the honors event raises funds for the People Like Me Organization, a community-based prevention organization serving youth, adults in communities using evidence-based, culturally specific and age-appropriate strategies for the African American community. And whereas People Like Me offers vital programs, including mentoring services for school-aged young men and educational opportunities for their fathers, making a positive impact within the communities they serve. Now therefore, I, Jane Fox, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of this Dublin City Council, do hereby express our appreciation as the host city of the honors event to recognize the People Like Me Project for their dedicated service to the community, signed this 14th day of February. Congratulations. Yes. Would you, would you like to say a few things about your Peoples Like Me Project? And you're welcome to take that on.
Again, thank you, City of Dublin, city leaders. It's really appreciative. This will be our third honors event in your city, so we're looking forward to 2023 as well of hosting the Central Ohio honors events. So on behalf of our board of directors and our staff, we thank you for your partnership. And again, this proclamation, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work you do. All right. Oh, a picture. Thank you. All right, at this time, it is opportunity for citizens' comments, to comment, for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a comment or have any comments been received online, Lindsay? No? All right. I would like to move to waive the council rules of order and consider the Frank, South Franklin Street Improvements Agenda item. Would that be all right? Can I have a second for that? Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
All right. Our staff report will be from Paul Hammersmith concerning the South Franklin Street improvements.
Good evening, members of council. I am here to talk about the Franklin Street improvements south of Selz Alley down to just north of Waterford Drive. So I'll quickly go through a project overview, community input, and then lastly, the staff recommendations. So the project overview, we're talking about reconstructing Franklin Street again from Selz Alley to Waterford Drive. Those improvements will include reconstruction of the roadway with the addition of new asphalt pavement and new curbs and gutters, also the addition of sidewalks and ADA ramps, and then lastly, street trees. Also with the project, there will be utility burial for a related project, which is South High Street. Those improvements would come along either Franklin Street itself and just most recently along Mill Lane as we've been working with AEP on, on that alignment. So the purpose of the project, again, provide for that utility burial for South High Street, enhance pedestrian facilities as requested by the, some of the folks in the neighborhood, and then lastly, resurface Franklin Street as previously scheduled. So in regards to the utility burial project, which is phase one, presently, where the design is ongoing for the electrical and communication facilities, in this March of this year, we will begin acquisition of the needed easements for those facilities. We're hopeful in October of this year to be complete with those easements, then begin the electrical and communications burial work and have it complete by June of 2023. In regards to the Franklin Street improvements themselves, that design is ongoing presently. In March of 2023, we anticipate beginning that construction and then having it complete in November of 2023. So just to give you an idea what the current roadway looks like, if you just haven't been out there, that's looking both north and south along Franklin Street, along its present alignment. Does currently have mature trees, combination curb and gutter, although it's a mountable curb and then asphalt pavement. So that current roadway width is anywhere from 20 to 28 feet wide. It's wider on the north end, gets narrower, narrower on the south end. There are no pedestrian walkways presently. On-street parking is provided on both sides, and we do have really inconsistent street trees that have been heavily trimmed over the years and as they've matured and grown up into the overhead utility lines. So we're proposing with the roadway is a 20 to 24-foot wide paved roadway that does not include the curb and gutter itself, pedestrian sidewalk on both sides of the street, maintain the on-street parking, and then certainly the addition of new street trees at regular intervals along the roadway itself. So to give you an idea of just a cross-section as proposed, it would include two 12-foot paved lanes, those travel lanes, again, that two-foot of combination curb and gutter, which really makes the overall width from back to back a curve 28 feet, which is consistent with our city standard for residential or local streets. Then we would have a six-foot tree lawn, and then lastly, a four-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street. We did seek out community input, and I'll briefly review the results of that input. So public information meeting was held on December 1st here in council chambers. We had several attendees and had a lot of good questions, a lot of good involvement with the neighborhood itself, so we appreciated their input. After that meeting, and as we indicated during that meeting, we were going to send out comment forms to the neighborhood for them to be able to provide their input directly to us and make some selections in terms of sidewalk, on-street parking, utility burial, street trees, and any other input they wanted to provide. So those were sent to 25 addresses. We did receive 20 comment forms back, and most of those did include some form of written comments or, or a letter itself. The residents, I want to also note that they performed their own survey in October of last year and sent those results on to the city. So in terms of those resident survey results, there were 18 respondents. Again, you can see the results, 22% preferred sidewalk on both sides of the street, 50% preferred on one side only, almost unanimous support for the utility line burial. There was an indication of wanting street lights, 56% wanted street lights on Franklin Street, and then 44% preferred Franklin Street to be narrow, and then also a preference at the same percentage, 44% for traffic calming devices. So we'll go over the, quickly, the survey results from the city's comment forms. So in terms of sidewalks, and the first column would be column A, which I know is maybe a little tough to read, but is adding a sidewalk, we did have 10 respondents support adding sidewalk. B column, the middle column, eight preferred not to have a sidewalk, and then two had no preference. So that's our 20 respondents. Of those that preferred sidewalk, eight preferred sidewalk on both sides, and then of those 10, two preferred the east side only. Regards to the on-street parking, column A is basically remain as is, which is allow parking on both sides of the street. B is no parking on the street at all. C would be six respondents wanted to allow on-street parking on one side of the street, and then three of those 20 had no preference. Burial of the overhead utility lines, pretty good support for it, 16 out of 20 supported the burial of the overhead utility lines. Three did not want to see those buried, and then this one had no preference. So staff recommendations. In terms of the street width and the on-street parking, we do propose to provide a 24-foot paved roadway. Again, that would be 28-foot back-to-back a curb, which would be consistent with our city standard. That we would do that from Selz Alley to John Wright Lane. We would provide on-street parking on both sides of the street, and that would also provide for a six-foot tree lawn. In terms of the southern section of the roadway, which would be basically from John Wright Lane to Waterford Drive, we would maintain the 20-foot existing paved roadway there, restrict parking to one side of the street only, and typically that's the side with the fire hydrants where we would restrict parking. That's customarily done. And then we would have eight-foot tree lawns in that particular area. We have a little more room to work with in terms of the tree lawn itself. Overhead utility lines, we would bury the overhead utility lines along South Franklin Street. And again, as it relates to the South High Street project, work with AEP, which we are doing presently to provide their facilities along Mill Lane and not have those along Franklin Street as best possible. Sidewalks of, staff is proposing a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk on both sides of the street. This would be consistent with the community plan, in particular, the special area plan for the historic district. That would provide a walkable district, improve pedestrian access, and the streets would act as a public realm where pedestrians would be first and the automobiles or vehicles would be considered second. The recommendation would also be consistent with the Historic District Task Force recommendations, which would be to have a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, streetscape design and sidewalks for, for pedestrian movement. And then lastly, the recommendation would be consistent with our city standards that we would provide with any street improvement, sidewalks on both sides of the street, and also consistent with our past practice, and probably most notably would be the mid-century neighborhood back in 2017 when we made those roadway improvements down off of Dublin Road South, Long Branch, and that particular neighborhood, that we did provide sidewalks on both sides of the street with those improvements. So although the city survey results are nearly even, staff does recommend, again, constructing the four-foot sidewalk on both sides of Franklin Street. Staff is seeking city council direction regarding these recommendations so the design elements can be finalized and the development of the construction plans can continue. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Paul at the moment? Public comment. Do we have anyone here to speak concerning the South Franklin Street? All right, would you come to the podium? Welcome. If you'll just give us your name and address.
There we go. My name is Alan Suter. I live at 80 Franklin Street and a resident of the Historic District down here. First, I want to thank city staff for their work on this. It's been a long road to, to get where we are, and I appreciate the, the work that's been done to get us there. Second, just a couple of comments on the, on the design. We are a part of the Historic District. We were, my wife and I were both on the Historic District Task, Task Force, and we've been involved in a number of Historic District events and initiatives in the 14 years that we've lived in the Historic District. One of the key components of the recommendations that came out of the task force and the public comment that was given to that task force is that people like the scale of the downtown, they like the walkability, and they like that aspect of the Historic District. I would submit that the work that's been done throughout the Historic District, not only in the business areas of South High Street, North High Street, North Franklin Street, but also in the residential areas of South High Street, are not consistent with the design that we have put forward here. The design is treating us, and you mentioned the mid-century modern home. For those that aren't familiar with that neighborhood, those are three streets south of the Historic District. They are not in the Historic District, and they were built in the 50s and 60s, much like Franklin Street was. Those streets were given the four-foot sidewalks, they were given the wider streets. In the Historic District, we're looking for ways to make it more intimate, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and more walkable kind of a neighborhood to support the overall Historic District design and the guidelines that have been put, put forward for that. Wider streets and concrete sidewalks are not consistent with that. So if you look at Franklin Street north of 161, where it will be extended down to, to Bridge Street there, and an intersection, a traffic signal will be installed, all of the area that's been built so far, as brick sidewalks, has those sidewalks bordering immediately on the street. If you look at where Los Chadelane is on the south side of Bridge Street on Franklin Street, that's a narrower street with brick sidewalks. My request would be that the city consider continuing that throughout the Historic District. We are part of the Historic District. We're held to the standards of the Historic District, which as a resident, believe me, can sometimes be quite onerous. So we're either part of the district or we're not. And that's pretty much my, my statement I'd like to make on that.
Thank you, Mr. Suter.
Good evening. Mayor Fox, city council, city leaders here. I'm Aaron Frank. I live at 85 Franklin Street, across the road from Alan Suter. I too live in the Historic District. Thank you for your time this evening. I would like to share a few thoughts that my wife and I, she's unable to attend this evening, but we would like to share those with you this evening. I, we, my wife and I moved to Dublin in 2003 and have lived in the Historic Districts for the last 18 years. We really appreciate the directionality of the proposed changes to the Historic District, specifically looking at the walkability. But as Alan mentioned, what we would like to see is the propagation of the character that is between Selz Alley and 161 West Bridge Street propagated through the rest of the Historic District, that being the narrower, more intimate feeling of the, the roadway, the brick sidewalks, the threads that tie the Historic District together as it is today. Though I grew up in northern Ohio, I, I moved here from Vancouver, British Columbia, having stopped in it in New York and in Seattle, Washington. And those experiences to me helped me understand that what we have here in Dublin is really unique and really special. It's really very special here. And what, in my opinion, that makes it special is this confluence of factors that is sort of, that it's a combination of the topography of the, of Dublin, the rolling landscape with the river cutting through the eastern side of the downtown, coupled with the historic features of the district that have been maintained and propagated and thoughtfully modernized over time. And as we look at this character that we call the Historic District, it provides, as Alan was describing, this closeness, this intimate, small village feel that I really enjoy and really appreciate. It's this, it's the narrower streetscapes. It's the tight street patterns that, that we have here. It's the use of brick pavers throughout the Historic District. It's the use of stone fences. It's this walkability of the neighborhood that you can walk through it and see the historic elements such as stone fences next to thoughtful and insightful modern improvements to that, to that district. It's a combination of these residences where people like Alan and me and many others reside in conjunction with restaurants and small businesses and ice cream shops that we have throughout the Historic District. It's this small-town feeling that we really appreciate and really love about the, about the community. It's this sort of diminutive feel that you have when you walk through the district, much like, it's this warmth that envelops you, much like a warm blanket on a cold winter evening. I think I've shared with some of you in the past that several years ago, one winter evening, we were at Dublin Village Tavern, enjoying, enjoying a meal there. And we were out in the, the far reaches and the long part of the, of the, of the restaurant up by the windows. It was snowy, it was cold, there was no, it was completely still outside, very little traffic. The, the restaurant was very subdued and darkened. And for that very brief moment in time, it felt like we were in a completely different era. It could just have easily had been 1910 as compared to 2010 something. It was just a very special and insightful and impactful moment for us because it just was very unique. And what I took away from that, it was, was an understanding of what it really meant to be in a Historic District for me, in that it, it's the, that, that it was much like going to a museum, where you can look at a painting, you can look at a work of art, and it envelops you. You, you start to notice things after you study it for a little while, that you start understanding that there's unique subtleties in that. And what I started to appreciate is that what we have here in the Historic District is much like that, but on a macro scale, where we have unique features that what, that envelope you, that bring you into it. And that is in large part driven by this closeness, this scale that really, to me, defines the, the Historic District. And so what I realized on that, on that snowy evening several years ago, is that we have this blank slate that was started 200-plus years ago, that has been added to thoughtfully over the years. We've had many wonderful successes and hits in there, a few misses, but by and large, it's been this thoughtful consideration. it's been this thoughtful consideration whereby we have yielded our, our proverbial paintbrush to this canvas that we call the historic district. And as we approach this again, as we look at the Franklin Street improvement, we are all stewards of this, of this grand canvas that we call historic Dublin. It's, we are about to embark on this opportunity to yield our proverbial paintbrush, to bring new design elements to the, to the, to the community here. And so what I would ask, much like Alan said, let's propagate and continue that theme of the historic character through the segments of Franklin Street that are historic in nature. Let's continue that thread. Let's not break it. Let's maintain that character of the narrower, smaller, diminutive feel of the streetscape, the slightly narrower street lawns that we find on South High Street that are in the, that are also in the residential historic neighborhoods. Those were five feet as compared to six feet. It's the use of the brick materials on the sidewalks. So with that, I thank you and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments concerning South Franklin Street? All right. Council, discussions?
No, I just say, you know, I was curious, you know, the current roadway is 20 to 28 foot wide and the proposed roadway is 20 to 24 foot wide. So I, what these two gentlemen are requesting is that the roadway be kept, you know, it's already, I mean, if they went ahead with the city's proposal, the roadway would actually get smaller. So I'm just trying to figure out what exactly they're asking for.
Want a 20-foot wide roadway?
You want a 20-foot roadway? Okay, thank you.
As I say, I also think maybe the, the point being is the tree lawns might be too wide. It's a very suburban layout of the six feet and then the sidewalk. And actually, this, Paul, this might be a question for you. How many of those mature trees are going to be impacted? How close is that sidewalk getting to those existing mature trees if you have that large of a tree lawn? And how many of those trees interfere with trees you would be planning, planning in the tree lawn?
It's a good question. We're still working out those details in the design right now, but our goal is to preserve as many of those mature trees. There's not as many impacted as what I think folks think based on the sidewalk placement because of narrowing the street from its, its current width. So that helps us basically, you know, move in the curb line, move in the sidewalks away from those mature trees.
What about the excavation depth, the, laying the sidewalks there or you mean?
Typically, I mean, it's a four-foot or four-inch thick sidewalk with, you know, three to four inches of gravel underneath. So it's maybe eight or nine inches of excavation. We might have some root pruning, which is typical of our sidewalk construction, but I don't know that we would have significant root loss as a result. And again, our goal would be to minimize that during construction.
And is there room for the trees that would be in a tree lawn in between the existing mature trees?
Yeah, again, we're working out those final design details, but again, with the, the 28-foot wide street or 24-foot of paved roadway, we felt that that minimized the impact to the trees as they exist today with that width. And again, trying to balance the on-street parking, the through movements of the roadway versus what's there today with the 28-foot.
And did you consider the option, I mean, had they brought up the option of the brick sidewalks before?
That was in, that was actually, and I should have mentioned that, in the comment forums, we did have a couple folks indicate a preference for brick sidewalk, and I think we talked about that in the staff report. I didn't mention that in the presentation, but there were a few that did ask about the brick sidewalk. If I'm not, if I'm recalling correctly, I think it was two out of the 20.
You know, I got a question for you. Say, say that we shrunk these streets down to 20-foot. Is there a savings, a cost savings for the city then? I mean, and still put in the six-foot green space and the brick pavers?
Yeah.
By shrinking the, the road, which is what the neighbors requested, is there major cost savings?
I mean, it would be the cost savings of that, that four feet, if that's what we're talking about, shrinking it, certainly, because essentially we pay for roadway construction on a square foot, square yard basis. So yes, it would be a reduction.
Paul, there was also mention about the sidewalk being adjacent to the curb. You know, could you do a 20-foot street and maybe have a, maybe a six-foot sidewalk on one side of the street? I think the difference between the mid-century neighborhood and this is that the mid-century sidewalks aren't really utilized for transportation so much to a place where Franklin Street, really, all of Waterford, not all of, but much of Waterford Village would utilize this, I feel like, to get to the Bridge Street District. And, you know, maybe a four-foot sidewalk is, it, it can be a little difficult to navigate. If, if someone's walking and a bike is coming at you, you know, something's going to have to go onto the street or the grass or something. You know, what, would it healthy compromise maybe be that we did a six-foot adjacent to a 20-foot street improvement and did it on one side of the street, which, you know?
Well, I think certainly if we had a little additional, we had additional sidewalk with, that would help pedestrian movement along the roadway. We struggle with placing sidewalk on the back immediately adjacent to the curb because of the driveway approaches. It's not as pedestrian-friendly and ADA-friendly because you have to dive down the sidewalk at each drive approach and then ramp back up. So essentially you go down and up the entire length of Waterford, or of Franklin Street all the way down to Waterford. So it wouldn't really be our preference to do that because I don't think in the end folks are going to like the look and feel of that, especially in terms of walking itself. And that's what's nice with the tree lawn is you put the sidewalk back, you were able to accommodate the driveway approaches and that slope of the driveway approach, and then that sidewalk ends up basically at the same height as the top of curb. We normally don't, you know, that's tree lawn width, the minimum is four feet. That allows us at least a minimum of a transition area for that driveway approach.
Yeah, I wouldn't do a four-foot tree lawn. I, I wouldn't shrink the tree lawn because now it's not a tree lawn, it's just a lawn because a tree's not going to survive in that space.
Correct.
So, you know, if we had a lawn, then we'll have a lawn, but we're not going to have a tree lawn.
Right.
So it, and it would depend on which side of the Franklin Street you, you chose. If you went to the west side, I think you'd have seven or eight interactions with driveways versus if you went to the east side, you'd have significantly more.
True.
So that might be part of the conversation. And I don't know how important it is to the residents to have a sidewalk on both sides, but, you know, given the options, you know, the lots are large, but the houses are, are closer to the street and the backyards are significant in this area.
Right.
So, you know, I, I don't want to assign a whole bunch more work, but I would be in favor of a, of a wider sidewalk, maybe on one side of the street if that was what the neighbors felt like would service them well, because I do feel like this is going to be a pedestrian and bicycle transit area and, you know, and then do away with the tree lawn or a lawn in that, that space.
You know, I, I too agree. I think, you know, looking at your survey here, sidewalks, eight people versus 10. And I, I think a, a good solution is, is probably to put the sidewalk down one side, make a five-foot sidewalk in brick, pavers, shrink the road to 20 feet. And, but when you decide on what side of the road to put the, the green space, you'd have to survey where the trees are and try to figure out what, what, what can be preserved. Six-foot is a minimum, I think, don't you, to preserve the trees?
We would.
And then you make the sidewalk a little more appealing because four-foot's a minimum for two people to walk abreast up to a home. Five-foot makes it sort of comfortable. And, you know, it sounds like, you know, the intimacy factor they're talking about probably is pretty important to that particular neighborhood. And, I mean, that's the solution I think I would seek in this.
The only other thing I might suggest maybe be contemplated is that the, the six-foot shero be, be put on the road instead of, you know, with some, you know, with some protection models. We have, we've seen, we've seen models of that out from all over the country.
Correct.
And then the parking be limited to the opposite side of the street because certainly if you only have a 20-foot wide street, you can't park on both sides because you'll
Correct.
allow emergency ingress and egress to come through there. So if you did the parking permitted on one side of the street, you had your 20-foot street, and then you had maybe a bike-walking shero in brick that was at street level but was delineated in some fashion, you know, that might help resolve some of that issue as well.
Kathy?
So I, I'm staring at the screen that a majority of people wanted the sidewalk on both sides of the road here. So I, I don't know if that, that means we take another suggestion back. I'm just cautious about that.
Right.
So the brick sidewalk, I know, because I, I do ride my bike down there quite frequently, and it is really hard to ride and walk on those bricks. So the request for bricks, is there a way to do bricks now that they aren't uneven and they're not, I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be a positive thing in two or three years' time? Or how do, how would you do that today would be my question? And the second would be, what percentage of the historic district has brick sidewalks? Or are we intended to do, just so that we all have clarity on that? Thank you.
Well, in terms of the brick itself, what has been customarily used in the historic district, just by nature of the brick and its unevenness and the type of brick, what we've laid is probably the best it gets in terms of a level surface in the end. Obviously, you do get some settlement movement over time, but where we've done newer installations like near the library, I mean, that isn't as good as it gets with that particular brick. As far as your other question, yeah, we could take a look at other elements and I'm trying to think of the second part of your question.
No, we were talking about getting consistency of brick sidewalks throughout there. I was just curious where we were in terms of if we looked at all of, you know, and is that the goal or to arrive at that?
In terms of, yeah, the historic district element as far as that, that brick, I don't know that we have an exact number of, you know, how much down there of the historic district is that type of brick. I'm sure we could come up with that pretty quickly, I mean, through GIS, but certainly along South High Street, North High Street, other areas.
So it would be your feeling then, if you did the brick, that the maneuverability of that would be okay over time? I just, I just know, it, it looks fabulous, there's issues with?
It's not as going to be a comfortable as ride for rollerbladers, roller skates, baby buggies, I mean, bikes. I, I think for those walking, we're not going to notice a huge difference from a concrete surface, but it's just a more irregular surface. And I think that's just a fact of, of the product itself.
I, I guess I would question a brick sidewalk in a mid-century neighborhood, not to be the bad guy here, but to me, if those homes were built in the 50s, 40s and 50s, it would seem to me that concrete would be more true to that, that time. A lot easier to shovel in the snow, can tell you that. Shoveling a brick sidewalk is no fun. Other than that comment, are we sort of heading in the right direction, gentlemen? Based on the things that you were looking for?
Some of the comments that you.
I got it that time. Some of the comments that you made were right on target. I think some of the issues that some of the people who were against sidewalks had, had to do with the feeling that the sidewalk would be up in their living rooms because there are narrow front, front yards there. So that would certainly address that situation. Putting the sidewalk directly, budding the street would also help to mitigate that. And putting it on one side would certainly help the other issue as well. As Mr. Hammer Smith said, the trees are not really that much of an issue. And at least on the north part of Franklin Street, a number of the houses, driveways are actually on the alley behind the houses, they're not on the front of the house. So to answer your question, it sounds like yes, indeed, it is moving in the right direction. It would be, it would certainly support what we're attempting to accomplish there. But thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask you, Alan, and Paul too? The Franklin Street extension, will that be a 20-foot wide, will that be a 20-foot wide street on the north side of 161?
No, I think it's actually going to be wider. I think it's going to be more consistent with the 24-foot.
Okay. And will that have brick sidewalks along?
Yes, that'll actually be the Bridge Street District standard with granite curb, the same brick that we've used. Again, around, best example is Franklin Street, just west of the library parking garage.
Okay. And the width of this, the width of the road adjacent to Chateaulaine is what right now?
I believe that's 28 feet.
It's 28. So it would narrow down, if we narrowed down to 20?
But keep in mind, that's, that, I, we made the distinction that this project is from Sales Alley going south because the Franklin Street extension north is going to include the intersection improvement at Bridge Street, which is going to be a traffic signal.
Mm-hmm.
So we may have some additional width in there with La Chateaulaine between Sales Alley and Bridge Street. So I wouldn't use that as your comparison necessarily because that might stay what it is currently. So that's why we really focused on south of Sales Alley with that 24-foot of roadway transitioning.
Does that 28-foot include the on-street parking in front of La Chateaulaine?
I don't have it committed to memory, but we'd have to check on that.
So that, so that, so I guess what I'm saying is, when that Franklin Street extension comes through, you're looking at possibly, I mean, how is this roadway going to look? Is it going to go from 28 to 24 to 20? Is that what you're saying?
Transition at the intersection. So like from Bridge Street to Sales Alley, we would transition at Sales Alley, you know, if we would change that width. And then as we got further south on Franklin Street, we would transition at John Wright to the 20-foot all the way down to Waterford Drive. And it, and today, the width is different, you just don't really notice it because of the way it transitions.
Okay.
And then the other distinction with North Franklin Street is it will have on-street parking, you know, parking stalls itself, you know, again, similar to what's already on Franklin Street up by the, the parking garage.
When you say parking stalls, you're going to, you're going to move in and out. It's not going to be a straight curb all the way?
Correct. That's right.
Down the street.
You'll have a dedicated place to park.
Okay, so, so what, what I guess I, I have to say that there's a valid argument here in that it is the historic district and everywhere else in the historic district, there are brick sidewalks. And in the historic district, there are the curves that come in and out. But putting a concrete sidewalk is not indicative or not characteristic of the historic district. And, and I think too, when we did the landscape improvements on South High Street, it went before the Architectural Review Board and they, and they, you know, they voted to do the brick. So it seems odd to me that we would take this one stretch and treat it any differently than we have done anywhere else in the district. You would not be able to tell you were in the historic district but for the sidewalks. They kind of indicate where the boundaries are. I, you know, I, I don't know if the preference is one side or the other. It is a well-walked street with a preschool. Everybody uses it to cut through to get to all the little shops. So I could see a brick sidewalk on both sides, but, but I don't know if, I don't know how you all feel about that. I definitely think there's an intimacy here that needs to happen and we have to maintain a character because once you start taking bits and pieces away, you don't know where you're at.
For the record, I'll state that I'm A and A on the chart there. So I'm, I'm one, one side of the equation, but in, in speaking with our neighbors that had issues with sidewalks in general, they evolved, they revolved around the whole issue of losing more of that front yard than they had to. And, you know, one side is an accommodation to that and narrower street, narrower street is an accommodation to that, along with attempting to do what was done on South High Street where the street was narrowed, has bump outs, parking on both sides to get the design speed of the street down to a reasonable level. We, you know, the, the interest there is doing the same thing on Franklin. It is a cut-through at times. If we put a, a signal at the intersection of Franklin and Bridge, that will definitely become more of a cut-through, especially for people coming north on, on High Street. They're going to avoid having to wait for the signal there by coming up Franklin and being able to make a left turn. Right now, you can't make a left turn there, so they don't do it, but they will very quickly figure that out. So with a lower design speed with, by having a narrower street and parking on one side, that's going to slow the traffic down as well. And certainly having sidewalks will make it that much safer.
Are the setbacks equidistant on both sides of the street for the housing?
That I don't know.
Sorry, can you sit down?
Setbacks of the house.
Is the housing setbacks equidistant on both sides of the street?
It varies.
Are they equal?
No, it varies. So I think on the.
No, it varies. So I think on the east side, they are closer to, the, the homes are closer to the street than what are on the west side. My yard, I think, is a little bit, front yard is a little bit deeper than Alan's, but it's nowhere near what you find down on Longview or Grandview or Marion Street, where those yards are two or three times the size of what we have, front yards.
Put the sidewalk on. You know, if you're crowding somebody on one side and the setbacks are wider on the other side, then that should pretty much tell you where the sidewalk should go.
Right. Yeah. And, and again, with narrowing, narrowing the street, that would help address it, no matter what options you chose to go with. But I think most of the people who prefer sidewalk would be happy with one sidewalk. Being on the east side of the street and the smaller yard, I'd be happy with it being, you know, coming right into the existing right-of-way that is in my yard. I'm fine with that. I like people. I like to wave and talk to them. No issues there.
I will say, when we closed, when South High Street was closed, I got continual complaints from Franklin Street about the speed. And once we get the intersection in, that road is going to be used crazy, it's going to be crazy traffic.
Yeah.
So having, having a narrower street is definitely going to slow down the traffic. So, so my sense is to narrow the street and to allow sidewalks.
Yeah, Jane, I, I agree, and there's, there's going to be some give and take for sure, but I think you need to keep with the character of that whole area, which is a much more intimate feel, as opposed to the very sort of suburban-type feel in the pictures that we saw. So I would advocate for keeping with that smaller, more intimate feel, because it will slow the traffic down. And I know that, because every time my husband goes on one of those smaller streets, he complains how slow he has to go.
Yes, it does.
Paul, you indicated that there would be parking pull-offs in there, but in, in the images and the staff report here and in the illustration of Franklin Street, it doesn't have pull-off on-street parking.
On North Franklin Street?
John Wright Lane to Franklin Street?
Yeah, I mean, that would be the portion we're talking about presently.
Project overview.
I was answering for the Franklin Street extension north of Bridge Street.
Okay, so there won't be any pull-off parking to the south of?
No, there will not. That's correct. There would not be pull-off parking to the south.
Okay.
Sorry for that confusion.
I probably heard you wrong.
So do we have a sense of consensus on what we would recommend to staff?
All about the brick.
And what about the narrow street?
My rationale behind that is that in any historic district or even historic structure, there's different things that occur at different times, different eras, additions to a house, but that tells a story. And so I would advocate for concrete, because I think it's more in keeping with the neighborhood. And I know, I know it's part of the historic district, but, you know, you have different architecture in different parts, different eras, and so on.
Amy, your thoughts?
Well, I think concrete is the preferable choice as to what is more appropriate. I still think it's easier to maintain and take care of and ride your bike on. And, but honestly, at this, I think it's kind of a residential decision at this point, so.
It's about the street width?
Oh, the street width? I mean, I, I think it's, it's honestly, I'm fine with leaving it up to what the residents prefer. I don't know that we have to stick necessarily to a set standard that we do everywhere in the city. I mean, I, this is very specific to these residents, and it's impacting their front yards. So whatever the majority, I would say majority rules is my opinion on this one. I'm not, don't have my heart side either way.
I think, I think the solution is, I mean, we have to widen the street as we get down to the major intersections. So, I mean, that's a no-brainer. But I think the idea of a 20-foot street makes sense, because it does slow down traffic. If it were my project and I was designing it, I'd probably put the brick sidewalk on the east side that has the widest difference between the fronts, the front setback of the houses in the street and then the other, the other side of the street, pick up a couple of feet possibly of lawn, which would be sort of nice for them too. So I'd put brick down on one side and go for the 20-foot.
Christina?
I'm kind of with Amy on this one. I think that the residents, you know, really should have the biggest impact on this decision. I think, to me personally, I like the more intimate feel of being down there. Yeah, I think concrete makes a lot of sense, because it, for all the reasons we've already stated, but I love the brick too. So again, I think the residents' input there should have the most weight.
Chrissy?
I, I think that in the, you know, residential portion of this, the 20-foot street would be sufficient. I would prefer to see a 6-foot sidewalk on one side or the other. You know, it looks like the, on the west side of the street, the tree lawn, the front lawns are wider than they are on the east side. So I would put it there. And I think putting it adjacent to the curb would be fine. I don't know that, you know, if you're in a historic district, you wouldn't necessarily have a tree lawn in, in front of all those houses, because the sidewalks would not have been there at that point in time. And, you know, to Amy and Andy's point, that, that is more of a suburban kind of layout than would be appropriate here. So whether it's concrete or brick, you know, that, that's for the engineering and finance people to figure out. But I do think this is, would be a heavily traveled, either by foot or by bike, street. So I think a 4-foot sidewalk on either side really is insufficient. You'll have two insufficient walkways. I'd rather have one sufficient walkway in the right spot.
Kathy?
I think I concur that the narrower will control the traffic. If, if you've taught me anything, Paul, is that you, if you make it wider, they will come. So I think that makes sense. I just continue to look at this chart that said, you know, the clear majority wanted it on both sides. I think if it is the residents' choice, that conversation should be had with the residents. Because I'm looking at this, and that was clearly what the majority said. But I concur, it should be, as far as brick, again, I struggle with the maneuverability of it. But again, if that's what the residents want, then I think that would make sense. But I would do the narrower, but I would get, I would get concurrence on both sides or not.
All right. I think we have to go back to the residents, but I, I go for the fact that it's, I appreciate what the residents had to say. I think it's really important. You live down there, and you know it. Definitely the 20-foot, I can see a real problem with the traffic flow down there. It's going to be fast. I noticed it after South High Street was closed. We had to put the speed trailers there every other week. So narrowing the street's going to help that quite a bit. I like the idea of the brick sidewalks, because it delineates for anyone walking the historic district that you are still in the historic district, and you're not outside of it. So it gives you a little wayfinding, and I like that. And I think it creates an intimacy, even though it doesn't necessarily go with mid-century houses. We are an eclectic historic district. We are not one that has one period. And there's sidewalks that are brick in front of all eras, 1850s to 1950s. So I think the brick sidewalks give you, you know, boundaries and parameters. So if you think you have direction, and go back to the residents?
One point of clarification with the 20-foot wide street. So I'm assuming just parking will be restricted on one side, correct?
It sounds like it might have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think what we'll do, we'll have a follow-up discussion with the neighborhood, and then really present and show those two different alternatives. Because the one thing I will offer is, is that with parking restricted on one side, effectively, you still have the same-sized travel lane coming down the street. So between a 28-foot, you know, a 24-foot and a 20-foot, you really don't have much distinction in terms of traveled area. If you think about, you know, if you have vehicles parked on both sides of the roadway, you know, it's, it's 27 feet between the face of curb. If a car takes up eight and a half feet, you know, there's 17. You end up with a 10-foot travel lane down the middle. If you do a 20-foot with parking on one side, you end up with a little wider area to travel down the roadway. So I do offer that for consideration.
Worth a conversation with the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda is on approval of minutes of January 24, 2022 regular meeting. Is there a request to remove this item from the consent agenda? I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinance 01-222, amending a portion of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan within the City of Dublin's Community Plan to refine the recommendations regarding the metro center area. Our staff report is Jenny Roush. Welcome, Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you said, this is the second reading for this ordinance, which is amendments to the metro center portion of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. As you recall, the D cap, as we call it, was approved originally in 2018, and this included the creation of four distinct districts within D cap outlined here on your screen. MUR 1 is the Metro Blazer area, which is outlined in purple. That is the area that we are discussing, and even more specifically within that is the inner loop that is between Metro Place North and South, very specifically. So there's the remaining districts, MUR 2, 3, and 4. There are no changes proposed to the requirement, excuse me, the recommendations related to that, nor specifically for MUR 4. That code was approved by council, so no changes are being proposed to anything that was previously approved by council related to that particular district. So within D cap, again, the goal of this is looking at our legacy office areas and repositioning those for revitalization and opportunities to obviously encourage our high employment areas with the complement of retail and restaurant uses, as well as recreation and housing as support uses. So really wanting to make these areas very vibrant and revitalize, because that's a really important, the employment piece of this is really important to the city and its livelihood. So as I mentioned, the D cap is this larger area which focuses on over 1,000 acres. Again, the proposal that's before you tonight are revisions specifically only for the metro center MUR 1 district. So within the plan, as we reviewed during the first reading, a significant portion of the plan is unchanged, because we are not making modifications to those sections. So the substantive changes that we are proposing, clarifying some of the building height that we had discussion related to at the first reading, with the bulk of the, the metro center language being on pages 39 and 43 through 43 of your document. And again, the purpose of this, looking at this metro center area and specifically the inner loop part, was refining the original recommendations that were outlined for metro center, and then the opportunity for this catalytic project to happen along France Road. So with some occupancy changes there, that there's a really great opportunity for something to happen along France, and what could that look like? And how do we then create this larger unified vision for metro center as well? So as we discussed at the first reading, we worked through this process with the Community Development Committee, which included council members, the three council members that make up that committee, as well as the Planning Commission representative, and then some development partners, property owners within that area, over the course of three workshops. And as part of that, we looked at a number of items, including previous studies, stormwater, development data, all to help us come to an informed recommendation, which was brought before you, which included affirming the four pillars that were part of that original D cap related to development, mobility, how the sites are designed, and what improvements look like along, within those sites, as well as in the process for how this gets reviewed as this moves forward. Particular to this metro center, we really keyed in on clarifying additional aspects related to housing. So ensuring that there's a variety of housing types that would be included in here to help support the office users, building heights, how do we look at that? What are the opportunities for flexibility moving forward, particularly along the France Road corridor? As I mentioned, the vision branding piece of this, wanting to sort of create a new identity for this, and what was the committee's preference and focus for that, streetscape, character, open space, sustainability, really looking at how we can look at all these factors and how that plays into a larger vision related to this metro center. So in terms of follow-ups from our first reading, there was direction given by council to remove the background and process information. That council really felt like that was more appropriate as a reference for staff to use moving forward. So we removed several of those pages that talk about the background in the previous version, just to make this a little bit more succinct in providing our vision moving forward. We did also, excuse me, include then stronger language to help clarify council's direction related to sustainability, again, building materials, sustainable practices, wanting to ensure that that's covered more clearly within the recommendations, as well as then infrastructure, placemaking, looking at how you live and work within this area, identifying, again, and focusing on parking alternatives. So it's not always going to be about surface parking, looking at ensuring that the recommendations include opportunities for shared parking, electric vehicles, those types of planning principles, as well as architecture, and how that plays into the design of this overall area of the metro center. We also then added some clarifying language about building heights along France Road in particular. We had a lot of discussion as part of our conversation with the recommendation that the building heights in that area related to metro, that there be the opportunity for increased building height between four and six stories as the maximum. But we wanted to clarify that it's not to be a six-story building all the way across, that there's to be varied building heights. We included language within the revisions that addressed that as well. And then we did clarify the language related to housing, ensuring that the variety of housing is accommodated, as well as the design is very thoughtful, and ensuring that that matches with council's direction. Again, wanting to provide housing as an infill opportunity within this area, so that you can live and work in the same, same space. So in terms of next steps, should council approve this this evening? As I mentioned during the first reading, our next step would be, again, we've already begun drafting the code for MUR 1, but looking at those regulations and what those look like in light of this, of our conversations that we've had, as well as the committee, and incorporating more specific requirements to then implement that. So again, this plan is looking at the vision, a sort of 30,000 view. The code would then be down to the nitty-gritty site, you know, setbacks, parking, lot coverage, all those types of details that we would see in any normal code process. So that would go through a public review process and go before Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as feedback before council, before something would happen with that. And as always, we would continue to work with our stakeholders, knowing that if there's opportunities along France Road or anywhere else in this district, making sure that that's, the process for them is clear as this moves forward, and we help them as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we are recommending approval of this ordinance with the amendments that we brought forth before you tonight.
Does anyone have questions for Jenny before public comment? All right. Public comment. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak to this this evening? Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment from Rosemary Hill at 333 Stonewall Court. As Waterford Village homeowners, we want to express our opposition to the plans proposed in the memo RE ordinance 01-222 D cap amendment, particularly pages 39 through 43 of the 60-plus page document. We object to the density, intensity, increased traffic, and urbanization this would entail. Although we see benefits to improving the metro center business park, we strongly disagree with the essential principles of increased density and intensity of development. The term isn't defined in the document, but presumably, intensity refers to building height. Key concerns for metro center. Number one, the stated acceptable maximum of six stories is simply too high for France Road frontage. Number two, as shown in the graphics on page 41, the multi-story buildings are too close to the roadway with no landscape buffer. Number three, should multi-story buildings become fully occupied, increase of France Road traffic would be significant. Given the number of fore lease signs in metro and the current work-from-home movement, full occupancy seems unlikely, of course. Number four, it is likely that traffic would use Monterey as a shortcut through Waterford Village to Bridge Street, significantly impacting the neighborhood. Number five, although not specifically mentioned in this document, it has been published that the Pizzuti Company hopes to build 265 apartments in two four-story buildings. We are opposed to the traffic congestion and inevitable We are opposed to the traffic congestion and inevitable increase in school taxes resulting from that increased population. Number six, regarding option A and option B, graphics on page 43, some version of the infill plan seems more likely than demolishing current buildings for redevelopment, option B. How cooperative would current property owners be? Would current businesses, Fifth Third, Chase, and Graders be removed? The graphics don't show them. Finally, who would pay for this massive project? Key concerns for France Road business area, Kramer Creek, Blazer, Bradenton. Number one, changing the maximum height to six stories for buildings south of Rings, particularly the east side of France Road, is unacceptable, and moreover, is a betrayal of the agreement reached with Wellin Farms Residence in 2018. Number two, admittedly, landscape improvements would be beneficial. However, clearly, a number of the current property owners aren't interested. Who would pay? And number three, the landscaped, or even just grassy berms, should be retained.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to the D cap this evening? Council discussion?
I'm looking at, I think it's page 39. At the bottom, there's some red verbiage, and I guess, is that, are those your notes? Or is that going to be part of the document? My note's in the way. Bear with me one second.
So page 39 is where...
Yeah, there's a map, and at the bottom, it says something to the effect of, something is encouraged to vary within, building heights are encouraged to vary within the area guidelines. And I guess I would ask if it should be encouraged or required.
It's actually page 30 of the...
39 of 163?
Yeah, but it's page 30 of the D cap, yeah.
Got it, okay. Yes, so we are, so under building heights, that's what you're speaking to?
Page number 30. So I'm just asking...
That note is again, looking at... Yeah, so that the guidelines would be, the maximum would be between four and six. So the graphic on this, on page 30 then, is helping tell the story of the words that are on page 29. So we're wanting to vary those heights, and we want to ensure that this is happening within those parameters. So again, I think encourage is what we meant. We could get more specific in the code, if you wish, but again...
I guess I'm open to suggestions, you know, required is obviously stronger, and encouraged allows more flexibility. But if we're flexible with everyone, then we don't get variation in building heights. And then, let's see, this is why I should print the document like Reiner does. So one of the, one of the changes or suggestions was to suggest different housing options or require different housing options. On page 40 of the document, 49 of the presentation, I see housing options for the local workforce that are thoughtfully designed and located is noted. But beyond workforce housing, I don't see any other comments with respect to other kinds of housing.
So if you look at then on page 42, we are, talk about thoughtful, excuse me, variety of thoughtfully designed and appropriately located housing types to support the workforce and the community. So again, one is specific to the Frank, France Road area in particular, and then the larger metro center redevelopment. We could broaden that one under the France Road if we didn't want that to also be specific to workforce. We could broaden that as well. The intent is, again, to provide this variety, because we need to, we're, again, pending our results of our housing study and what that recommends, and what a developer would find appropriate.
It's probably fine. The word "community" is pretty broad.
Okay.
Christina?
Yeah, thanks. So I thought we had talked about changing the language just a little bit. I think it's back on page 29 of the D cap. Yep, there it is. Under building heights, I thought we'd talked about going with heights in feet rather than in stories? Just because, I mean, you know, you see one to six along France Road, which to me feels a little bit too big, and then four to eight along 270. And I understand there's a transition there, but, you know, you could end up with a first floor that's really two stories high, and then, you know, five stories on top of that, and you're still at quote-unquote "six stories," but it's really more like a seven-story building. You know, I think that's going to be awfully awkward across the street from small residential houses. I mean, I'm really struggling with that. I feel like it's going to look like this is one city, and this is another. And we already have that issue on some of our bordering streets with some of our neighbor municipalities. I don't want that to be the feel here. And I know that there's a couple of places in the document where it says it has to be appropriate for the adjacent neighborhood. I don't see how six stories is appropriate for an adjacent neighborhood, especially when we haven't specified how high that is. So I'm really struggling with that one. That one, to me, feels very much like a struggle. I appreciate the very, the stronger language in terms of varying the building height and elevations, and the different stack of housing. And I get all those types of things are going to be more specific in the code. And this is more of, I don't know, an inspirational document, if you will, with some guidelines for what we want there. But I have to be sensitive to the people who are going to live across from there. Because I think, and maybe it's an issue with some of the inspirational images, they show buildings right up on the sidewalk, which come right up to the street, and it's like, in your face, and, and, you know, there's got to be some buffering that happens there. Because it's not, it's not intended, I don't think, to be Bridge Street-like, right? I mean, it's intended to be much more transitional than that. But that's not the feel that I'm getting from the stuff that I'm seeing in here. And if I were a resident that lived over there, I'd be really scared by some of these images. So that's a bit of a struggle for me as well. And I feel like we've talked about some of these things, and, and, you know, as far as who's going to pay for things and things like that, that all comes with development. I'm not too worried about that piece of it, but, I don't know, those are some of my bigger concerns. And I'm not, you know, I think that emphasizing some of that green language, I know you put some in here. I think that's really important, and the placemaking. It's a better document than what it was before. I'm not sure we've hit the nail on the head, though.
Okay, maybe, Mayor, if you might, if I might, for the building height comment, because I know that was specifically discussed. Again, the challenge is that this is meant to be more visionary, so putting those very specific height requirements in a document like this is challenging. That would be more likely to be in the code. I completely understand your intent, yeah.
Yeah, it could be that you put language in here, you know, it's this many stories, but that is contingent upon, you know, you know, code actual height, right? Because otherwise, I mean, six stories to a developer is very different than six stories to what I might have in my mind. And what I don't want to do is we have developers come out in front of Planning and Zoning, and they're like, "Look at this great big giant block of a building I'm putting, I'm bringing in front of you." Because it matches your D cap. It's all in here. It's good. We fit the spirit of the document. That's the struggle for me, because it wastes everybody's time, and that's not what we're trying to do. And I know we're trying to make it attractive for developers to come in and tolerable for residents to be there. And so that's my concern. That's my struggle.
Jenny, I would just add a couple things. I'd like to see some percentages of residential versus, so, you know, we talk about these mixed-use buildings, and what we get, a lot of times, is we'll get, and my fear is, in this area, is that we'll get a sprinkling of things on the first floor, maybe the workout facility for the apartment complex, and their offices, and, you know, something else. But I think it might be appropriate for we, for us to add percentages of residential versus multi-use, what the balance of the uses other than residential in some of these buildings. And, you know, maybe that's a 40/60 split, or something along those lines. Because seeing what applications are coming in in these mixed-use areas, we're getting very little mix, and they're almost exclusively single-use buildings, with the exception of something on the, something minor on the ground floor. I, too, would be concerned about the overall height. I agree that that might be a code issue. And the second major concern that I have might be a code issue as well. So when we look at our legacy offices in the city, and in its entirety, in this location, and in others, the buildings have retained tenants, and they retain, retained value because of the flexibility of the buildings. So I've been in a number of these buildings, meeting with business owners and things like that. And the stuff they've done on the interior portion of these buildings is fantastic. The reason that they've been able to do those things is because of the kind of construction that happened in the building, and that's slab construction versus stick construction. So if we were to allow four, five, six stories along France Road, I would like to see the requirement or the code in this area dictate that any, that it would be slab construction versus stick construction as you go vertical, because that will extend the usable life of the building. Because it can, and, you know, this was my, my understanding of what the Bridge Street code was going to be, that buildings could serve multiple purposes over the course of time. And in reality, if it's a stick-construction building, it can't serve multiple purposes over the course of time. It's really very limited. So those are some things that I would like to see us require, not suggest, but that we would require, because I think that we've seen it proven out, even in our own community, that, that the kind of construction will determine the lifespan of the building, more so even than the architecture of the building. And I think that's why we have pretty good occupancy in this area with these older buildings, that architecturally would say you're not very desirable. So those are my things. Some percentage of residential, so we don't get these exclusively residential buildings. And we do talk about overall height, and I would argue that slab construction will help with the overall height of the building, because, you know, you can pour a six- or eight-inch slab in, you know, versus if you do a truss, you're going to be looking at 18 to 24 inches in much of this. So that will help manage the height of the building, and then the type of construction that we would require. Thanks.
Yeah, what I'd be interested in knowing is, you know, developers love to build apartments, and they'll build them first. So I don't want to see this all filled up with apartments. I, I guess I'd like to know the percentage, or see a percentage worked out of how many homeowners would actually own condominiums in this work site. If you remember back when Dublin won the best city in the United States, whatever award it was, a number, a number of years ago, two of the criteria was, you know, how many people live, own their homes? And we had a huge rating compared to the rest of the country, and how many married families. So, and I remember those two criteria. So I'd be interested in knowing, because, you know, you don't want this to become an apartment complex. You want this to be a living quarters where people are going to live and work, and have shops, and enjoy, you know, a space. And later on, and I, you know, I know it's really early, but the amenity package of why I'd want to live there is very important to me. And, you know, this thing was designed, and it was moved from just some big, rather ugly, unattractive ponds to a water course that moves through the whole thing and makes this sort of a neat place to live, so. And maybe too early for that, and we get down to the bones of landscape architecture, but to see why, you know, choices, I could live at Bridge Street, live by the river, I could live here, and this is really a neat space with a lot of wow and punch. So I guess that's what, and I, and I agree, you know, with your paper so far, it's preliminary thought process, but those are very important. So, you know, I know that if you open this up, every developer in town would run in here and try to build apartments, and that isn't the way we want to go.
Ma'am, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So first of all, I want to say thank you for removing all the stuff they've removed. It's making it a much higher-level document. And I want to say I completely agree with everything Ms. Groom said, those three points. But again, they should all be in the code that's coming next, and not in this document. We need to keep this higher level. And to kind of address what Ms. Ludo said, is, I, in my opinion, I think we should remove as much of the visual as possible. I know you want to make it pretty with pictures and words, but the visual, I think, is what gets us in trouble, because it adds specifics. And page 49 is my biggest concern, because you just said you don't want to put numbers on height, but here you're putting numbers on width of lane, and width of sidewalk, and width of patio. Basically, you have two, like, typical sections of the streets there. And I have concern with that, especially in light of, we don't know what we're going to do with alternative transportation lanes on France, and things like that. I don't think we should put that detail of what we want that cross-section to look like. So I would recommend removing 49. I'd almost even recommend removing 50, page 50, those renderings as well. Because again, you label that rendering as, with recommended improvements, and then we're going to get a developer come in and says, "Well, that's what you recommend, and we're going to make everything look like that." And that's, oh, I would just keep it as high-level as possible. You know, and, I mean, I think this, I think we're good. I'm fine with this. And then we can get to the details in the code.
Thank you. I wanted to just echo a couple points. I wanted to go back to the point that Andy made early on about, when I read this, it, it felt pretty heavy to me that the folks that would live there are more the, the work, work in that area. I think, I think we need more than just one word at the end that says "and" "community." I think the flavor back, I think to Amy's point about, what is it that we're trying to create here at a higher level? I think the flavor of that could use some more work, because I read, it absolutely feels to me, when I read this again, that we're really talking about work, working housing versus community housing. On page 29, we're actually lays out the foot, the, the building heights along here. Along that same line, I think we ought to say why we're doing that, because we have a list here of one to six, four to eight, one to three, a varying, I just think some sort of, what is it that we're articulating here? So if I'm a developer and I'm reading this, I'm understanding, why is it that we have this? You know, adjacent communities, as Christina said. I just think there needs to be some clarity around this. I don't really have any heartburn with height at certain places, because it can create incredibly visually interesting things that work in the community. But I think the harmony of it there, I just think we need to spend a little more time and say, "Why is it that we're doing this?" Because one to six doesn't really help me. It just, to me, it says like six, right? So I think we need a little bit more work on that. I do like having visuals, but I think the visuals have to fit maybe in a little bit of a framework, because you're right, it's easy to point with one, but visuals, I know, create examples, and I know that's a bit challenging, and it's hard work, and, and I so, I so applaud that. But again, I think a little more about, what is the flavor that we're trying to create here? Why are we doing some of that? I think if that's the intent of this document, I think it could use some, some additional, and I know you had an entire week to do it, right? So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, my, my thoughts are, well, a couple of things I'll point out on the building heights. It was confusing to me under MUR 4, and I think this is something that I would like you to explain, because some people might be listening to this. MUR 4 on page 29, we have building heights, general uses, and then building heights follow that. And it makes it seem as if that all of France Road, so I want to make that clear to everyone, that the recommendation for the six stories is in the metro area, because it seems as if it follows the MUR 4, which it does not. I also agree with Christina and a few of the others here. Cardinal is a six-story building. It is a huge building. And six stories along there, I have a problem sometimes when I look at High Street, the Mezzo Building compared to the Domino's Building, and that's on a smaller scale, is really off-site, and I realize that it's a much narrower roadway. But I think when we talk about transition, you know, no more than, I would like to say, stay under 40. stay under four, four stories on France Road, but to me, what, and I like the varying heights. I think up towards Metro, four, four could work pretty well, and, and lower. What I find that I'm missing in this document, and what I worry about will come forward, and I know as developers come, and we want to encourage them to come, is that they understand what the identity of this is. And I think that's what I'm missing here. This seems to me simply like a redevelopment of an office park without a true branding. If I were to create a marketing brochure and hand it to you and say, "This is why you want to live here," I'm not sure I would know why I would want to live there. Because I don't see anything here that says to me, like, "It's a town-style retail and lifestyle center focused on arts, entertainment, public programming, and nightlife." It's, it, it is simply a redoing of, it's, it reads like a redoing of a office building, and we're going to put some residential in it, and we, and we're going to try to, we're going to try to beef it up with some more things, but it doesn't have that wow factor, that identity we're looking for. I think we're moving in this direction. And my concern is exactly what Chris's is. I worry that once we say yes to this, we're just going to get a lot of, of apartment complexes without the parts that make it live, work, play, shop, and eat, right? We're going to get live, we're going to get live and work. And the other pieces that is going to make this work for us is going to be, it feels like it's missing in this document. I can't, I can't understand what the end picture looks like right now with this. So help me with that. And, and the green, I love the whole Greenway thing, but, but how does it really work? So, oh, Andy?
Well, I would say the sales brochure comes next. But, you know, the visioning process has brought out a lot of the things you're asking for. They may, I feel some of them are articulated here, but certainly, as I said, that could be part of the sales brochure. But talking about a lot of apartments, we don't want a lot of apartments, so just one idea would be that there's a requirement that a certain percentage, say 75% or more of housing units are owner-occupied, or something like that. I don't know if you could put something like that in the document, but it would limit the number of four-rot units, and, and maybe 75% is too low.
Bridge, Bridge Park did not bring a lot of pressure on the schools, from what I understand. Was there a percentage, was, was there a percentage of so much owner-occupied in so much apartments? Does anybody remember?
No, there was not.
Wasn't?
Demand. But there was about mix between office, residential, commercial. There, yeah.
Oh, Lindsey?
Yes, Mayor, we did have a citizen sign in to speak on this topic. Dennis Shively, if you are still here and would like to speak, you're, we are ready
My name, my name is Dennis Shively. I live on the Wellon Farms. I've lived here for over 30 years. I've watched the city grow and prosper before it was a city. I think you're talking the 270 area. I look at that as a gateway into the city of Dublin, and if you're going to put apartments and big buildings all along 270 in that area, that's not going to look like Dublin any ways of the imagination. You go down where you get on 70, where they've got houses backed right up to 270, look how bad that looks when you go around that curve heading west. Is that what we want in the city of Dublin? Is that what our city's going to become? That's just my comment. I think we should do better. Thank you.
I think to Mr. Shively's point was the conversation we had last time, is that we wanted to insert language into the document that would preclude housing adjacent to the interstate. And I don't know that we accomplished that, but that was a, I thought, a fairly universally accepted principle from this council.
I live in Waterford Village. We also have lived there 30 years. I haven't read the document in full, so I apologize for that, but I am here because I'm concerned. I would tell you that I agree with most of the things in the statement that Lindsey read. I think if I would represent our neighborhood, that we are concerned about more residential encroaching with the, all the things that brings, traffic, more people, et cetera. We've als, we're also, our, our neighborhood is in a dilemma with what's happening at the other end of our neighborhood, with proposed apartments, condos there that seems to have been tabled. I haven't heard anything else about that. So we've got more coming in there, and we've got more coming on the other end, and it is concerning. So I would very much appreciate knowing how much of this is going to be residential, how much of a traffic impact. France Road, if you happen to travel it, which I'm guessing you do if you live in Dublin, is very highly trafficked already. So I just hope that you will take into consideration the things that you heard this evening that are concerns of the residents of Waterford. Thank you.
So we have a few, a few dilemmas. You know, as, as, and just-
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry. You have another speaker, sorry.
Jean Philammon, 4731, Belfield Drive, president of the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association. And I want to thank, obviously, Mayor Jayden Fox, members of the council, senior leaders, and as well as Ms. Jennifer Roush, planning director. Earlier today, I had conversations with both Mayor Fox, as well as Director of Planning, Ms. Roush, and those conversations put us at Llewellyn Farms, you know, somewhat at ease with the direction of tonight's meeting, or what we knew was about to take place. The, the wow, I certainly appreciate the fact that Ms. Roush's presentation was about MUR 1, and not about MUR 2, 3, and in particular, Llewellyn Farms, that's MUR 4. A wow, I appreciate that, but I do have one, one concern that, that remains in the back of my mind. And that's when you look at the, the language of the building heights, or under building heights of page 29, it may be in page 30 for some, or 31 for others, but the one that I have, the concern that we have at Llewellyn Farms, is whether that language could be, or can possibly be used in the future to change the tenor of the de-cap. In other words, today, under this current city council, as well as under the leadership of Ms. Roush, it may just apply to, to MUR 1. But tomorrow, it may be, they may come to us and say, "Hey, we think that the general use, based according to the language that's being used here, we think that it also, or it could also apply to the other MURs." Again, not today, but may possibly be in the future. So I just want to make sure that we have a current understanding that if you're going to use this particular language that we have here, that it applies, or strictly applies to this, to MUR 1, or, you know, the metro center area. I, I think that it's, as it stands right now, it's vastly, vastly expanded. And again, you know, a different council, a different planning director could say, "Hey, no, we think it applies to the entire de-cap. At least that's the recommendation that, that, that we have." So, thank you.
Do we have any else, anyone else who would like to speak on this?
Good evening. I'm Todd Kennard at 335 Avon Court. I actually intend, came tonight intending to say nothing, but when I heard a couple other folks who live in the Waterford Village area speak up, I wanted to echo my support for their statements. We've lived in Dublin for over 20 years, raised our kids in Dublin. We li, our house, a corner of our property actually backs up to France Road. I, I don't know if any of you other folks live right there on France Road. The, the document talks about explicitly increased density along France Road, and explicitly talks about a perceived traffic problem along France Road. It's not perceived, it's real. It's very real. And the notion of having all of this additional housing and retail, thankfully, now with the, the construction that's going on just south of where I live, I'm going to be able to get to yet another Starbucks. Luckily, it's only an eight, eight iron away, instead of me having to drive three minutes. I can now get to one. Now, apparently, if this proposal, as it's drafted right now, is passed, I'll be able to hit a six-story building with a driver. I don't need all of this development. We moved to Dublin because it was a beautiful, small community. And I just encourage you to think about that character. I particularly appreciated your comments about the challenges of having so much growth where people live. I can't, it's really difficult to go in my backyard now, at 5:00 in the afternoon, we have a swing set out there, my kids are too old now, but I wouldn't take my kids out there, there's too much traffic, the noise is loud, you know, it's, it impedes conversation. So my, my view is, the notion of a six-story, or even a four-story apartment, or complexes right along up at France Road is really very disconcerting to hear that you're considering. So I would ask you, keep, keep those in mind, and I'll be back at the next iteration of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Clay Dany, 5775 Settlers Place. I just wanted to echo Jean's comments about the, the language on page 29. I think, I think a lot of the reason why Llewellyn Farms has been, probably a lot of people listening, and a lot of people in attendance today, is just because the kind of ambiguity behind that first bullet point, 1 to 6 stories along France Road. France Road is just a really long road. It goes from MUR 1 to 2 to 3 to 4. I think there's just an opportunity to clean that up, just so there's no ambiguity, no misconceptions about, around specifically what MUR segment this applies to. So anything to kind of clear up that ambiguity, I think would go a really long way, because I know the neighborhood just fought so hard to try and get MUR 4 to a place where everybody was pleased with the outcome, and we finally got there. So that would just go a really long way. Thank you.
Dana, do you have, Aunt Jenny for us?
I have some, I guess, thoughts that I'm happy to share, and we can talk through. So I guess to answer this particular question, or potential clarification along the France Road corridor, again, if anything was going to happen in MUR 4, that would require notification and code modifications, and the neighborhood would be engaged. So if anything would ever happen, that's, there would be a public review process, just for everyone's to assuage some concerns. But we could add on page 29, related to that 1 to 6 stories along France Road, we could include that it's as outlined in that graphic on page 30, because that's very clear that the building heights are 1 to 2 along the entire France Road corridor, with the exception of that portion that is related to Metro Center, where the building heights would be allowed to be higher. So I think that would potentially get to the neighbor's concern, so that it's clear that we're not suggesting six stories through the length of the France Road corridor, that that graphic supplements that language. So I would definitely suggest incorporating that. And then, related to some of the questions and comments about percentages of residential throughout the development, and then residential versus other uses within a particular building, that definitely feels to me as though something that could be addressed as we move forward with the code and the guidelines, because that would be then the legal requirements to ensure that that happens. So we could work through and work, again, with our partners that we've used as part of this committee, to talk through and understand what's feasible, bring forward recommendations, and talk that through with council or the committee as that moves forward, to get to those particular concerns. That way, we're doing that in a, or I'm doing that in an educated way, and something that's going to work, and, and make sure it gets the product that we're all wanting there, that there's that good mix of uses, that it's not all residential, and what that, what that looks like. What else did we talk about? Again, I think as we've outlined it within the document, we do try to hit on the topics that you're talking about. What's that sort of wow factor? What's the vision? I mean, there's an opportunity, I think, too, as part of the guidelines and the code development, again, we don't want this to replicate Bridge Street, but one nice thing within the Bridge Street Code is the creation of neighborhood standards, and what that looks like. So it's, again, it doesn't have to be form-based code, but the idea of that, that there's some additional robust language within the code that really gets to what the neighbor, what this neighborhood is going to feel like, I think that would be maybe an approach to get to your points about what is the character. So it's sort of that next level of detail that, that helps us create that vision based on the comments that you're suggesting. So we can, we can definitely look at that as this moves forward, to more specifically pinpoint those pieces, if that would work for the group.
Jenny, can I ask you, you know, we have some, we have some possible developments that are interested in the France Road frontage. And if, if we're not satisfied with where this is right now, the ability for developments to come forward utilizing the vision of this, tell us about how we can, how that can happen. That's a PUD, correct? Because right now zoning is PUD. But, because, so could you could explain that to us? So we, we want to invite development to come, but we want to make sure that development is the kind of development that we find appropriate for this area.
I mean, thankfully, if something comes forward at this point, this is all very fresh in our minds, and have a lot of detailed comments from council and the committee about what, what they want to see there. So a proposal that would come forward would include a rezoning and the creation of a development text, which would have to address all of these various issues. So what's the building height? How is that varied? How are they demonstrating that? Setbacks, streetscape, landscaping, how's the stormwater accommodated? If we have in here, that, you know, if the plan is adopted, we then do have guiding. Even if we don't have the code, we have that guiding vision for what we expect there. So if we want this meandering waterway throughout this area, wherever this development may start, we would want to encourage that and figure out how that's going to be accommodated as part of their development, and looking at residential component versus, you know, other support uses, whether that's commercial, or retail, or something along those lines, we would incorporate that as part of their development text, and that would be reviewed by the planning commission, and then that would come before council. So if there were deficiencies that you didn't think were addressed as part of that, you would have the opportunity to weigh in on that.
And if the plan isn't passed tonight, and it's still in review, it's still going through revisions, that's still the case, would the plan be utilized if someone came forward? Would we be able to utilize this as, as the proposed vision that council is looking for? We're just in the middle of revising. Because we've used it in planning and zoning on a few other things with the France Road frontage as future land use guidelines.
Well, I mean, the plan existed before, so we weren't using this interim version. We were using what was previously existing, which did also show buildings pulled up closer to France Road. So I guess just for everyone's awareness, too, that this is not a new concept, that these buildings would be pulled closer to France Road. It doesn't really define what that distance is, but they were shown as being pulled up closer to the street. So, but this evening, if you are recommending approval of the document, again, with the minor revision that I included, and if there's any other specific things you want me to include, then this would be the final document. We would then take the additional comments tonight and incorporate that as part of the code and the guidelines. So we would not necessarily make further revisions to this unless, unless you wanted to see it again.
I have one other thing. I think, I'm good with how we have it at this higher level, but I do think we need to add about- level, but I do think we need to add about, then I, I think we need to be clear about the no residential along the interstate. And I think perhaps page, you could just add it as a bullet or part of page 25, which is your introduction to land use and our general goals for land use for the area. You could probably just say that we want to stay with our vision of Dublin of not having residential up against the freeway as one of those points. That's the only, um, I think, high-level thing that's not in here yet. But otherwise, I'm, I, I think it's at a high enough level, particularly if we keep things as recommendations and again, try to remove some of the more specific graphics.
Jenny, what code would govern development prior to us working on code for this particular area?
So, the code that, or the lots, um, within this area are zoned PUD as part of the Metro Center area, which, again, a significant number of them, there's, because it's so old, there's not very good development standards. We would default to SO or, or community commercial potentially. So, they would have to go through a process most likely. If you wanted residential, some of that would be really challenging to accommodate under the current zoning so that we would recommend that that be rezoned most likely, um, because there's so many pieces and parts to this that are different.
So, in the interim, before we get code written for this, that it's a fairly safe assumption it would come in as a PUD?
Yes.
I, I think that would give us a lot of flexibility and, or give the planning commission a lot of flexibility to read the document and make sure that the document was, that the application was in line with the document. So, I agree with Amy. I, I think that we can, I, I would like to see some language that would preclude, uh, housing along, uh, the interstate. Other than that, I, I think the balance of the work that we have to do will be relative to code.
I'm not comfortable with the heights. I, I'm just not. Six foot is just, I mean, six stories is too much for me. Even on the, uh, even coming around the, the corner of France, I think it's just going to create a wall. It's not going to be something that feels like a transition. And it, it just drops down like a hill as you go down France Road. I, I just don't, I think it's a large mass on that corner.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but it does say up to six stories and it will be governed by a PUD so that they, they can't come in and get six stories, um, just because, because the code, the code that they're operating under doesn't give that to them largely. Uh, so, I, I don't know how you would get a six-story building in, the planning commission would have to say, we justify this six-story building because they don't have the right to, the right to it, given the zoning that's presently on these parcels.
What's the heights that's, that's on those parcels now? You said-
So, it would be, SO is typically that, the ratio of height, building height to building, um, width, that creates the setback. So, and it's dictated by parking. Again, I mean, there's a lot of limitation, stormwater, there's a lot of limitations to that. So, I don't, I'd have to look at it from a capacity standpoint to see what that building height would be.
At present, they're all single-story buildings, so it would, you'd be hard pressed to get to six and still have your part, meet your parking requirements for square footage and all of that. I, I'm not saying it's mathematically impossible, but it's mathematically improbable.
Right. But if we put, if we put six stories in here now, it's in here. And so, when it does go to code, you're going to, you, and it, and it isn't, uh, developed yet. It's, it's going to be a, it could very easily be a six-story building.
No, or you could limit it, limit the overall height in feet and that, that would govern that.
We're going to write code-
Right, I understand.
-to back this up. And until that new code is written to back it up, the existing code isn't placed. The existing code won't allow a six-story building.
Oops, I do understand that. I'm just saying that if we say yes to the, hide the recommendations here and then you go to write code, you're just, you're going to fall back on, on saying that you're either going to be as tall as a six-story or you're going to be less. I'm just saying, my position is, is that I think six stories can't even be considered in, in this. So, that's just my, that's my opinion.
You know, a lot of this is determined by the setback. That's your visual aspect of how the, how this thing's going to be impacted. And we haven't really even begun to get to that point in this. By the time the neighbors are done going through all this and we go through the next series of these things, I'm sure a lot of these details are going to be worked out to the satisfaction of the neighborhood and the community.
Uh, we need to move on. Just want to make a couple of comments on page 39, on the key aspects. I think it's very important that the key aspects include more of the live-play focuses that you're going to, to help describe this, this area. And, um, uh, and on 57, under implementation, um, I would like to see you, you update the incorporation of the themes and goals so that the live-and-play implementation strategies are strong and give some sort of a visual image of that. And then on 61, it talks about lighting, but not as a design feature in the streetscapes, which I think is going to improve the area. It's not just the building lighting, but, um, adding lighting as a street design feature. And then on page 65, you talk about open spaces, but we don't really talk about cultural and civic spaces. So, all of those create the final neighborhood style that you're looking for and I think it's important to add them.
Don't we, we, don't, you want us to make a decision, right? We need to, we need a vote on this.
We do.
And I guess I would just want to make sure that everyone is okay with what's, what was, is recommended in terms of changes too.
I'm going to do like I did last time. I'm going to ask my director if she has clear, clear direction that's not conflicting. Because I've heard conflicting things. I've heard no vision and I've heard use code. And then I heard vision and, and images. So, we've got conflicting information. You know, the other thing I was hoping to take advantage of while our residents were here, and thank you all for being here tonight, by the way, appreciate it, um, is what's often not said in these meetings is that we get all wrapped up in code. And I think someone needs to remind us all why we're in this room, talking about this tonight. And that is the fact that these, um, office parks are not performing like they used to. And they're, they're dinosaurs. And I fear what this city's going to have is a corral of dinosaurs that are going to have tumbleweed blowing through them. And I think what we're trying to do is create a sense of neighborhood that can happen in these kind of settings where there were no neighborhoods before. And I'm not suggesting a sea of housing or, you know, super tall skyscrapers and all that kind of stuff. But, the only way these buildings are going to survive is if workers get closer to them. I'm just saying it because that's what needs to be said. And the closer workers are to the buildings, the less they travel. That's a fact. And we have to plan for mobility options that don't, that do impact France Road in a positive way and not in a, in a negative way. I just want to give my speech here because I'm the outgoing guy that started this in 2014, long before the pandemic came along and we saw that these, these things are, are dying. And I'm going to tell you, they're going to die. The best interest of our residents that live close, nearby or in the city is to make sure that these buildings can at least be, or have a chance, a snowball's chance of being vibrant. And we got to insert some level of amenity, some level of housing in some way that creates a nice neighborhood to be a part of and a nice neighborhood to be adjacent to. So, I'm sorry for the speech, but I just, sometimes we forget about the big picture of that. And I, that is my biggest fear for this community, that we so beautifully built. And I've spent 33 and a half years of my life working on this community. I have all the same fears you do. But, change has to come to some degree and we have to skate to where the future workforce is. And if there's one thing we've learned in the pandemic, what this council and the councils before it saw was the change in workforce that's happening. And now we're fi- now we're three years behind. And so, that's why I worry about when we talk about going in the back room and writing code for months on end, in words that people don't understand. And I can't provide vision to people so that they can understand what it takes and what the residents want in terms of a vision. That scares me. So, I'm just, I'm just saying it so I can say I said it. But, I appreciate all the hard work from staff and the residents and, and council that's gone into this and our planning and zoning commission and everyone else. So, thanks for letting me have a moment. I just going to ask my director again. Do you have clear guidance?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess to the no residential on 270, again, there was some, um, good direction given to that tonight. I want to make sure that I'm understanding that. Does that mean if there is another office use or some other use of building along 270 that there could be residential located behind that? Or we're saying no residential whatsoever, whether that's in a mixed-use building? Because again, I feel like last time we had a, um, discussion that there was potential for how it's designed and what those, that compelling uses would, or excuse me, competing uses would be within there. So, I want to make sure I'm clear. And there also may be then some implications with, um, some of the maps and what those site-specific, um, recommendations are. So, for site number seven, that does talk about, um, and that's the, where we have a current development proposal that includes residential. It does talk about allowing for infill multifamily. So, I would want to check and see what other sites. I don't know that off the top of my head what other sites that may impact the language. So, I just want to be clear that I'm giving consistent direction to people as they come forward.
For me, it's visibility from 270 for housing.
Okay, got it.
If it, if there's a building, and, and that's just the end of that ring, right?
Okay.
And I would, I would agree with that too. Like, so for seven, you could have offices on the frontage and you could have residential behind it and still be in that seven. It's just not on 270 frontage.
Okay.
I would maybe say something slightly different, and I think I'm the person that said it last time, is that, um, if the building is built such, if we're thinking, um, apartment buildings with patios out front, et cetera, so forth, no, that, no. But, um, I can say, um, recently back from a trip to Berlin, that there are some amazing buildings being built now that are mixed-use buildings that do not look like they have apartments on the back. That would be, that would be lovely on that. And we talk about having multiple uses of buildings. I, I think it would be the look and feel of that building because the, the architecture in some other parts of this world have figured out how to do this. Because again, they're cities, right? I, I spoke to a city, so they've had to figure out how to live, work, play together in a, in a shared building. And so, there are some wonderful examples where that can actually work quite well. So, I think it's from, if we're, we're talking about the look of, of patios and what we might call traditional, I would absolutely concur that we would not wish to do that. But, I would not want to say that we, we should encourage ourselves to, to look at some of those because they're actually quite amazing. And I, I don't think we should shut the door on that. And I think I'm the one that brought that up last time. So, to me, it's how that actual building looks, um, and what it says. And we should be a bit creative about that and there are some great examples of that.
But I think that should be like an exception and not the rule. I think the rule should be no residential because those are the typical looks like, uh, balconies hanging over 270. And then if they want to come and ask for an exception and ask for a waiver and they have this great building and you can't tell there's residential, then okay.
Yeah, that's, that's-
That would all be in the code again.
But why, but why couldn't we encourage them to bring us something? I mean, we, we seem to have so much of the same architectural look.
Because you can't say, and here you have to either say residential's allowed or not allowed.
I, well, and I'm not even sure it has to be allowed versus not allowed. I think you can say that residential is discouraged. I mean, that's the same language that they've used throughout this document. It's either encouraged or it's discouraged. Because as you said, it's at that very high-level view. I, I would not be for having residential right along 270 in the case of having balconies or what have you. Like, I hear what you're saying, Kathy, um, but I'd have to have that, that concept before my eyeballs before I could say that we would want something like that. So, I think if you have the language that, you know, up, you know, residential apartments along the frontage of 270 is discouraged. And then when they go write the code, they can try to figure out code speak, how to make all that work. But, from a vision perspective, I think you can say discouraged. I don't think you have to say allowed or disallowed. I mean, that's the same language we use throughout this document. And then you, then you, it gives, you know, a developer an idea of what we're talking about. Doesn't make, make, mean they can't come to us with that creative idea that what you're talking about. It just means that, I, they're not going to come to us with a bunch of balconies hanging off of 270. Like, that's just not going to fly.
Okay, that sounds, that's very helpful. Thank you. So, we'll incorporate some language for that. So, but then the bulk of the comments made related to maximum building height, percentage of uses in the building and then overall quality of construction, type of construction, amenities, um, setbacks from France Road, all of those comments, I'm taking those and moving forward with the code and the guideline development. Um, and then we'll make that note if you're okay with that related to the building height, referring to the building height plan so that it's clear that that's not going down the corridor. Those are then the only changes that I'm making.
Could you repeat that?
I'm good with that.
I hear what you just said.
Okay. So, the only changes that I'm making are clarifying this, um, comments related to residential along 270 being discouraged and making notes of, um, the building height and how that's referring to that building height plan. The remainder of the comments that were made are I'm going to take and use to help develop the code and the guidelines. Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm good with those changes. Um, I think as far as the, the, the height is concerned and my concerns about the height and where they are, because this is going to, if we get anything before that code is written, it's coming in as a PUD.
Right.
I, I feel very comfortable with that. That gives us a lot of, uh, control over what we can allow there. So, that's-
Okay.
-to me the saving grace of that piece of it.
All right, let's, um, we need to, um, can I have a motion to, uh, accept? I, is that correct? We don't need a motion for this? Okay. Then, we just call roll.
Could I, could I say, you, you, we're, we're, just to be shy, clear, we are agreeing to approve something with all of these changes that we're discussing here tonight.
With the two specific changes that we talked about and the rest I'm taking to use for the code. That's what I was-
So, all the other language stuff we suggested will not be updated in this plan?
That's what I'm clarifying, that it seemed like that would be, like, we can, I can bring, I mean, I can bring it back if you want. But, because to me, it feels like it should, a lot of these are very numerical things that should be incorporated as part of the code and the guidelines.
All right. So, if we think the document is full enough, any other comments? Every, we, we've got these looks on our faces like we're not sure it's there.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. Now, what Dana said, the city manager, is absolutely true. You know, either improve and move on or you go into a demise and we don't need that. So, that, that's the whole reason we're doing this process.
All right. So, we will, um, Jenny, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinance 01-22. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, introduction, first reading, public hearing ordinance. I will make a motion to postpone the introduction of the first reading of ordinance 02.22 to the March 7th, 2022 council meeting. May I have a second?
Yes.
Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Epstein.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 03.22, amending the annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, uh, Q1 Deer Run Force Main and Lift Station Project Debt Financing. You have an introduction?
Um, yes.
Our staff report is Matt Stifler.
Good evening, members of council. Ordinance 3-22 sets up the financing necessary should council decide to accept the lowest and best bid for the Deer Run Force Main and Lift Station project by resolution at the meeting of council on February 28th. This ordinance establishes the financing plan that is coming forward at this time as it requires two hearings and the resolution accepted next, uh, meeting of council only requires one. In order to finance this project, the city will be using approximately $4 million in previously issued debt, as well as authorizing the issuance of an additional $1 million in sewer debt. A detailed breakdown of this debt is outlined in the memo accompanying this ordinance. The authorization for this additional debt will be included as part of the sewer debt ordinance currently scheduled for its first hearing at the meeting of council on March 7th. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the meeting of city council on February 28th. I'm available to answer any questions regarding this project's financing. If there are any questions related to the project's construction or details, uh, related to the bid acceptance, those will be addressed in the memo accompanying the resolution for council's consideration at- for council's consideration at your next hearing.
Thank you. Is there any public comment, Lindsay? Council questions or discussions on this? All right. Second reading, public hearing is scheduled for the February 28th meeting. Thank you, Matt. Introduction, public hearing vote resolution 02.22, accepting the lowest and best bid for the Hayden Run Wall and Fence Repair. You have an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Paul?
Good evening, members of council. The work for this project is located along the north side of Hayden Run Road between Dublin Road and the Scioto River. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the project. On January 7th, four bids were received and publicly opened by the engineering staff. The project is funded from the 2022-2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of $250,000 and is designated as the Hayden Run Wall and Fence Repair. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution this evening, accepting as lowest and best a bit of precise pile driving incorporated in the amount of $241,712 for the project. I'll do my best to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any public comment, Lindsay? Council questions?
Paul, can you tell me how the construction of this is different than what we've done in the past? So I recall when it was first built, and I don't know what year that was, I'm going to guess late 90s?
We were estimating it's 25 to 30 years old, the fence and, and the wall itself.
And, you know, when they first built it, it's my recollection that the stone fell off as quick as they were putting it up.
Yeah, there was a lack of adhesion, yes.
And I think part of that might have been the materials used, and part of it seemed to be the way they finished the face of the wall. It was a very smooth finish, and it didn't appear to be etched at the time at all. So can you articulate a little bit how the construction of this will be different than that?
It's actually going to be, oh, sorry, wrong presentation. It's actually going to be a different detail in terms of how the fence is going to be installed in the wall itself and actually sealed better because really what deteriorated the fencing was just corrosion at the base of the verticals themselves. So that, we looked at particular attention to that and paid close attention to it in the design. And then there's also going to be limestone caps added to it that are a different detail than what's been provided present, or as it's constructed presently.
And how about the drainage design? Because it, it seemed like the lower portion of the wall had a lot of scaling on it that would indicate that it was holding moisture.
The wall itself is actually in pretty good shape since we resurfaced it probably almost 20 years ago and put new veneer on it. There are some localized places that, that might need some attention, but overall, I feel like it's in good shape. Instead of the acid wash and etching that was done the first installation, we did do the, you know, attach wire mesh to the wall itself. So I think in terms of, if you're talking about the veneer and the lick and stick on it, I think that's in good shape. Again, if you look at the detail, we're just looking at the cap and the railing itself. And again, that cap's going to have a crown to it so it will get water to sheet off the top.
And is it a singular piece? Is it a solid cap?
Yes.
And the areas where there is some sparring and, and things like that, is there some drainage added to this? I, I would agree that the, the entire wall does not appear to be holding moisture, but there are certainly sections that are.
Right. We were not anticipating doing any drainage improvements. This was just purely replacement of the metal fence itself and, and a cap on top of the wall because it's in such bad condition. This kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like presently.
Okay. I, I would like to see some drainage put in, but that, that might be a supplemental contract that you could.
And we can take a look at that, certainly. We would be glad to.
That's all I had. Thanks.
All right.
Paul, I wanted to ask you, because this is the applied veneer and because you're, you're seeing, you know, difficulties with this, have you had any problems anywhere else in the city with veneer? Either not being able to stay on, water problems, fading, because it is something that we're seeing an awful lot of now?
We have had installations where it wasn't connected properly to the vertical surface. Remember Oak Metal Drive? We're actually going to do that replacement. That was before you back in December. And we've changed over the years how we do that attachment. Again, we go to a stainless steel mesh that's mechanically fastened to the face of the wall and then gets a mortar over it and then, and, you know, basically a, a scratch course and then kind of an intermediate brown course. And then the, the lick and stick is attached to it, you know, with a mortar. So really, the failures that we've seen has been that lack of mechanical adhesion. Again, I mentioned that acid wash where they just kind of washed the surface of the concrete and put the veneer right on the face, and it just did not stay, especially if moisture got behind it. And the other critical component is the cap itself. When you look at this detail I just showed, one of the earlier, or earlier details was they used the veneer over the top of the, the wall, and it just does not work. It holds moisture, allows moisture to get back behind the vertical surface. So that's why on all of our current installations, you'll see that cap placed on the wall itself.
And for, for those folks who build homes and using this, is this somewhere in a building specs that one would require that it be put on a certain way so that we don't have it falling off houses?
We don't necessarily, for us in engineering, regulate how it's installed on homes. I'm sure there are several manufacturer, you know, recommendations and details. We've used, and to answer your other question, we've consistently used Dutch Quality Stone for the material itself. We've had very good luck with it. I, I don't, wouldn't say that we've seen any fading with it. It, it might deteriorate over time as any material will, but we feel like we've had very good result with the product itself.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so this veneer is really not filleted real stone? Is this, is this a concrete product then?
Yeah, basically, it's a concrete product. It's man-made, but a concrete product.
Yeah, if you cap it, your problems are going to go down.
Correct.
All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 03-22, appointing Veterans Advisory Committee members.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Staff report, Kirby Dirk.
Good evening, members, council, and happy Valentine's Day. Resolution 322 before you this evening serves to reappoint all members of the Veterans Committee while also conducting some housekeeping regarding terms and appointments. Originally, the resolution establishing the Veterans Committee required each branch to be represented by a single representative. Then those who were appointed would select a chair and vice chair, in which the city would then backfill the two positions with the appropriate representatives. However, this led to an issue when finding replacements and a potential issue of change of chair and vice chair due to the nature of rotating positions. In the new language provided in Resolution 3-22, staff is directed to ensure there is representation of the diverse perspectives of the varying different military branches as well as appointed representation from the American Legion Post 800, City Council, and Washington Township trustees. This provides the city and the Veterans Committee the flexibility needed while maintaining the original intent of the prior resolution. Additionally, Resolution 3-22 establishes staggered terms for the Veterans Committee members moving forward. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for him? All right. Do we have any public comment on this? Any questions or, I mean, any discussion on this? Adam? Kathy?
I would just say thank you to all the volunteers and everyone that serves and for your work on that. Thank you.
I think there is a requirement for us to nominate the council representative, correct? As I read the document, so I would like to nominate Mr. Reiner being our sole veteran to serve as council representatives on the Veterans Committee.
I'll second that.
Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 04-22, authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the US 33 State Route 161 Post Road Interchange Improvements, ODOT PID number 80748.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Megan O'Callahan?
Good evening, members of council. Dublin has been working cooperatively with project partners, including ODOT and Union County, to improve the US 33 State Route 161 Post Road interchange since the early 2000s. Construction for the project is on schedule to begin this spring with an anticipated substantial completion date in 2024. This resolution is the final step in ODOT's process as they prepare to open bids for the interchange improvements project. In September of 2021, City Council approved Resolution 5521, which authorized the city manager to enter into the preliminary participatory agreement required by ODOT, identifying project expenses to be paid with the local contributions, and establishing the general funding structure of the construction project. Since the approval of that resolution, ODOT's Office of Estimating has generated their updated cost estimate, and that, that cost estimate anticipates an increase in construction costs based on their recent history of projects awarded and associated costs with those recent projects. This is consistent with the current construction industry trends. It is likely due to supply and labor-related shortages and inflation that we've been hearing about. Based on ODOT's current estimate, the total local share of the construction cost is now Of this amount, Dublin's estimated contribution is approximately $8.42 million. The difference between what was estimated in September and ODOT's most recent construction estimate is roughly $3.5 million. Based on the previously approved funding structure that was outlined in the previous resolution, the ODOT MOPSY funding levels are capped, and the private development contributions were fixed by previous agreements with the developers. And Union County previously had increased their initial contribution from $1 million to $3.5 million. So given the increased estimated funds needed for the project, ODOT's agreed to allow Dublin to pay the roughly $3.5 million difference in two separate installments, the first half being due in 2022 and the other half in 2023. The amount that would ultimately be owed in 2023 will really depend on the awarded amount of the project, and the project is slated to open bids by ODOT on March 10th of 2022. So we'll know in just about a month what the actual bid price is for the project. So Dublin's ultimate share of the cost will be determined when the final actual project costs and allocations are determined. So at this point in the bidding process and the agreement with ODOT, ODOT's process now requires execution of the final participatory agreement, which sets forth the same general provisions as the preliminary participatory agreement, but with more specificity because now we do have the updated ODOT current estimates. So the plan to fund this project is outlined in the memo that was provided to council, and staff recommends adoption of Resolution 421, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the US 33 State Route 161 Post Road Interchange Improvements Project. And with that, I'd be happy to assist with answering any questions. Thank you.
Any public comment on this, Lindsay? Council questions and discussion?
Megan, in reviewing the funding summary, didn't we get some money from the state on this as well outside of ODOT?
Yes, we did, and that is included in the Dublin contribution amounts. I just didn't separately itemize that in here. We did.
Thank you.
Kathy?
So it's unfortunate, but it is the world we live in, right? The costs are going up. So just to be clear, so if, if they come back and it's not $3.5 million, it's $2 million, our share would be less. What if it's $6 million more?
Then our share would be more.
So what we're saying tonight is whatever, whatever that comes back at that final thing, we will, we will take that increase.
Yes, we are, we are ultimately responsible for any cost differences.
Okay.
Thank you. Because the other contribution amounts are capped.
Are capped. Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious if it's possible to make the first payment in '23 and the second in '24. If the project's not going to be completed until '24, would they afford us that flexibility?
So their standard process requires all of the money upfront before they open bids. So what we've achieved here is already a variation in their process and an accommodation because the costs have gone up.
Worth asking.
I think that's, yeah, I, we can make the ask, but again, we've already gotten special accommodation from ODOT due to the situation.
How accurate are their estimates usually?
Um, they're typically within, I don't, I don't, they bid thousands of projects a year. But I would say typically they're within plus or minus 5%.
So you're, you're thinking that this will probably, are you feeling comfortable that this is probably where the top level is?
Within plus or minus 5%, I would say.
All right.
I mean, the, the good thing is this is the time of the year that is best to bid the project. So as we go into construction season, now is the time that contractors are loading up on work. And also, I just believe that costs are going to continue going up, so I think now's the time to proceed with the project.
All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Mayor, can I just, real quick? Yeah, I, I feel like Mr. History tonight, but I just got to say that, you know, this has been a really, this, this started like in 2004, this process, and it's, that's how long it takes to get something like this across the finish line. I, I just want to thank certainly councils past and present for this, but thanks to Megan and Robert and Paul Hammersmith and Jeannie and Tina and all the engineering team who did all the heavy lifting and stayed with it through all this generation of trying to get this project to fruition. Thanks to our partners in Union County and so forth for, for helping too, and ODOT. But it's a phenomenal, and an amazing accomplishment to get something like this done, and I just, I didn't want that to go, you know, unnoticed. I know it's not unnoticed by y'all, but put it on the record. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Dana. It is a huge project. It's going to be wonderful when it's finished. Under other temporary structures, signs, patio extension request.
Good evening again. I am bringing forward for you a request for consideration to extend the executive orders as raised by a particular property owner, but wanted to provide some reminder of timeline related to the executive order. So as council recalls, as part of our COVID protocols back in 2020, the city manager, under the state of emergency, obviously issued some executive orders related to outdoor dining and patios, temporary portable structures, as well as sign provisions. There were two extensions granted in 2021 to allow those to remain in place with the most recent one approved in February, or excuse me, in October, which with an expiration date of February 28th, with an additional caveat that within 30 days of that timeframe, that October timeframe, that a particular property owner would come forward and confirm either that they're removing that by the deadline or submit an application for a permanent solution. So we have worked really diligently with all of our owners and users that were able to take part in this executive orders to ensure their compliance, including Tuchis. And we have worked with them extensively over the last several months to help them bring forward an application for a permanent solution. So they had a temporary tent installed in November of 2020, and then, again, following the most recent extension of these executive orders, they submitted an application for a concept plan, which was approved by the ARB. They require final development plan and preliminary development plan approval, given the scope of the project. Their original concept plan was looking at modifying the existing temporary structure. They have since then revised their plans and are looking at a completely new structure and went back to the ARB in January of this year to. and went back to the ARB in January of this year to present then two design options that would be this permanent solution and got some feedback from ARB, who was very supportive of them moving forward with enclosing this permanently and gave some particular feedback about which of the two options that they would like to see. The final design of that and submission of that preliminary and final development plan is going to take some additional time, so there is an application submission that is pending that will need to be submitted to finalize that, but the applicant is making a request of council to extend these executive orders related to temporary structures and patios. And that's what's before you tonight is council's consideration of whether this should be granted and whether we should draft some regulations or legislation to then accommodate that. Mr. Barnum and Mr. Underhill are here to speak specifically to their particular request, but just wanted to provide a little bit of context, and I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
So you're telling us the intent of the design is okay, ARB's approved it, and they just need more time to execute the actual construction and the final part of the planning?
Yes.
Okay.
Aaron Underhill here, attorney with Underhill &amp; Hodge at 8,000 Walton Parkway in New Albany. With me this evening is Craig Barnum, the owner of Tucci's, and Mike Lusk, our architect. We understand this is a sort of an unusual request, but part of the reason we're here this evening is to portray to you the efforts we've been putting forth in the last several months. A project like this, while it may not seem like it is very complex in terms of timing, process, design, and ultimately the world we're living in, supply chain issues. So we pretty immediately, I was hired right around the time when the extension was granted till February 28th to bring down the temporary structure, and we started to roll up our sleeves and look at process. And we pretty immediately thereafter, I think it was November 17th, were in front of the ARB with the first step in the requirements of the process, which is a concept plan review. We got some very good feedback that night. We had a proposal to modify the existing structure and another proposal to provide a more permanent solution. Ms. Cram was there, and, you know, it was a mixed bag, but we were actually asked and we agreed to come back informally due to the amount of work that goes into doing a preliminary and final development plan, which are the next steps with the ARB, and we agreed to do that. Unfortunately, with the way the rolling deadlines work with filing for different boards and commissions, we were unable to get back until January. And I do want to thank Jenny and her staff for giving us a little bit of an accommodation around the holidays to get that submitted in, but that was very well received, and we really got positive feedback, and our intent is to move forward with a replacement of the existing structure, something more permanent. I think something that everybody will be proud of and will really like, and we just now need time to go back through the preliminary and final development plan processes. Our intent is to try to do that together in one application. There's a lot of engineering that goes into that, a lot of work with this gentleman, and Steve Sturts, another architect we have onboard. So I wanted you to know that this was not a request that we came to lightly or without a lot of effort, but we just ran out of time. It's our intent to move as quickly as we can. Craig's going to walk you through some scenarios. I wrote a letter to council to make this request formally. I threw out a date there. I think we're open to suggestions. We weren't necessarily saying it has to be that date, but we're just trying to be realistic as well with the world we're living in, getting materials when you want them is a problem as well, and we certainly want Craig's business to continue to be enjoyed by the community and to be successful until such time as we're ready to break ground on the new project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
Craig Barnum, 35 North High Street, Tucci's. Sorry for my address, I was coaching at St. Bridget's tonight, so I had to come straight here, and happy Valentine's Day, by the way. This whole process started back in January of 2020. I had the idea of covering the patio from a restaurant in downtown Detroit called Townhouse, overwhelmed by just how impactful that patio structure was. It was a retractable roof, pizza oven, full bar, and so forth. And so I did approach the ARB in January of 2020 with an informal proposal back then that was estimated to be about a $2 million investment, not only with that, but was also an interior renovation. And as I think two of the board members here tonight were on ARB, that was not met very positively that night. I more or less was shut down that night. Some of the board members said it was never going to happen that night, and I was excused and not to return. Fast forward a few months later, COVID hit, and we were shut down for about three months, three or four months, and May 21st at Tucci's is when the governor allowed the restaurants to open patios and the interior, and I was pleasantly surprised. I have seven restaurants, and of the seven, Tucci's was the one. From day one on May 21st, it was a very busy restaurant because it's a 22-year-old restaurant. I didn't lose one staff member, not one manager, and my regulars there are so embedded that they were extremely happy that we were open, and it was kind of their home away from home. As the summer rolled on and the height of that pandemic, I realized that since I lost 30% of my seating inside and probably 30% to 40% of my seating outside, I started looking around thinking in October, the restaurant always goes through a significant hardship from October until May 1st because that patio closes, I lose over half my seating. I do have to terminate managers and terminate employees, and we go through five or six months of extreme hardship. So I did twice during that summer have two health inspectors walk in with six-foot poles who walked to make sure that all my tables were six feet apart, which they were. I had a crazy idea later that summer. I thought, well, if I don't cover this patio and I've lost 30% of my seats inside, I'm in a lot of trouble. So I had this crazy idea that somebody gave me that there was a temporary structure or this tent idea from Germany downtown on Fourth Avenue, and I went down there to look at it at the Bud Dairy on the roof, and I saw that tent structure that day and then came back and met with Dana McDaniel. And to make a long story short, I spent a lot of money, and Dana said, and Dana was very honest with me about the project back then and said, look, I'm going to help you out through COVID, but when my powers are over, you're going to have to go through the process to get that permanently approved if you want to keep that structure up. In the year that it has been up, I've been shocked at just how well it's been received. There are people in general that would rather sit on that structure than sit in my restaurant. It's busier outside than it is inside, and that's in November, December, January, and February. It's been an overwhelming success. There have been a lot of positives. It's stabilized the business. I have not had to fire anybody. Sales, although dropped when the patio season did close or, you know, when the summer ends, but it's definitely stabilized the business. It's the first year I've taken reservations on my patio. Every year, we get a scream from regulars and guests who, I guess, ask us why we don't take reservations, and it's because when storms and rain rolls through, we can't guarantee we have seating outside, but now that I've got a roof and I've got sides on there, I do. And during the summer, I didn't take all my sides off. I only took the east side off that faces the east because most of the storms roll through the west. And there were nights when we had massive storms and my patio was full, and people love sitting out there during storms or even snowstorms. And the place, ladies and gentlemen, is, I'm telling you, it's magical. Although from the outside, it may look not that great, or it's a patio structure, I would disagree somewhat that the energy that's created, the ambiance to the street, and I'm telling you, my guests, I haven't had one complaint in a year from anybody who's ever said to me, we think it's ugly and we don't like it. People love it. So here I stand before you tonight with, I've hired two architects. By the way, the architect that's not here tonight is Steve Sturts, who has designed all of Carmel City Center, who's a personal friend of mine who actually came up with these designs, so I'm working with him on these designs. Mike Lusk here is the in-house or in-town architect, and then obviously Aaron Underhill. So I've taken this process very seriously. We've gone to the ARB now a few times. They were the ones that recommended, that said, hey, don't submit a formal application, don't waste your time and money, you need to get our feedback, and we have gotten some very good feedback. And so as the business owner there, I'm faced with now tearing down a $400,000 structure, which I was aware of, and losing that investment and probably spending somewhere between $5 and $750,000 building a brand-new structure, and the difference is this will not be a tent or a pergola. ARB wants us to build a extension of the building. So this is a significant improvement that will tie this building into the original building. So this isn't just erecting something up. So, you know, we're here to ask for an extension, and I apologize, I should have been here at the night we discussed the February 28 deadline. I was very surprised that that wasn't more like May 1st when patios open. February 28th, I still have another 60 or 90 days before the patio closes. So really, I see, I'm requesting, basically, there's several options. February 28th is right now the date that patio structure can come down. I'm going to have to get heavy equipment out there. We're going to have to shut 745 down, you know, to one lane with, as that equipment goes on there, because I have 12 eight-foot concrete footers that go into the ground. The other option is to leave it up until May 1st and tear it down, which then will obviously allow me to have 60 to 90 more days out there, but it won't cause any hardship for the business. I can still employ my employees these next 90 days, and we can take it down May 1st, or we can commit through this process that by October 1st, construction, the goal is that construction starts on the new structure on October 1st and we take it down. So, you know, it's in the best interest of the business for us to keep that structure up or a form of the structure through the summer until October 1st. And I will say, the minute that structure comes down, if the structure comes down and there's a gap of three, four, five, six, or seven months, there is going to be tremendous pushback from our guests and our residents in the city that dine at that restaurant. They're going to stand on that patio and go, why did you take that thing down, who are specifically going to walk into that restaurant to eat out there? And I'm going to explain to them, I'm going to say, you know, this is the process I went through, but most people don't, will not understand why that structure came down. Knowing that a new structure's going up and the plan is October 1st, that construction date will start.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what's the construction time? Say that this thing stays up to October the 1st, how fast will the new structure come up?
We're going to meet with Lehman-Damon tomorrow morning. My guess is, depending on how extensive this structure is, it may be a few months. I mean, we will be shut down on that patio for, they're going to have to tell us tomorrow morning. It's probably going to be several months. So if I start this thing in May, that patio will be shut down for several months. Well, I can't start it in May. So whenever the construction period starts, it's going to be at least probably 90 days to 120 days before we reopen. Would be my guess. The inside of the restaurant hopefully will stay open, but the outside will be shut down.
I guess I'm curious, your opinion is to wait until October to do this, and why is that? I mean, why don't you want to tear it down, start it in May? Because you want to have the plans ready, the material won't be ready, or?
Well, first of all, it gives us time to plan. Then there will be no or little hardship to the business at all. Everything is, we operate, I mean, obviously, with their storms, there's a roof, I take reservations, and it makes more sense. It's a seamless transition where the patio structure comes down and then construction starts. I mean, people understand that. I can plan for my staff and tell my guests that's what happens. Now, if I tear it down and say, hey, construction's going to start six months from now, there's going to be tremendous pushback from our guests saying, why would you take it down? And then I'm going to have to have this conversation, I mean, many, many times, saying, well, here's the process and this is why, but if I'm going to lose a $400,000 investment, I would think the city would work with the business and with me to say, whether that comes down February 28th, May 1st, or October 1st, why wouldn't the city work with the business? The hardship is coming, the investment's going to be lost, and I'm putting significant capital back into the business to make it a much better architecturally pleasing structure, why wouldn't the city work with the business and make sure it's a seamless transition?
But if you tore it down in May or June or July, how fast would the new structure come? Is it material problems and design problems yet? You're still trying to work out the bugs? So?
Yeah, well, it's Michael Lusk, Lusk Architecture. So the schedule we've laid out is, we've retained a surveying company to do surveying right now. We're hoping that's done by the end of this month. We'll need a couple of months to do design work, work with staff, go back into ARB. I assume we'll probably have two meetings with ARB. There'll be some revisions. So that process, you know, will take us, you know, our first opportunity, we think, to get into ARB is the May meeting. Then we're going to need a couple of months for the construction documents part of it, the technical bid documents, another month to bid, go through the permitting process. That takes us up to October 1st. So he wants us done as fast as possible. He's on us big time to get it done as quick as possible, and, but I think that, we don't want to shortcut the process. You know, it's got to be a thought-out, very good design, well-articulated, and it's just the time it takes.
Have you seen supply chain issues?
We see supply chain issues on all of our projects. We always meet with engineers and contractors right before we get started with the design to say, you know, what materials are available, what do we stay away from? We're doing a Trader Joe's in East Lansing, Michigan. We're not using bar joists because we can't get them for six months to a year. So those are the kinds of things we've got to work around right now, but we're trying to alleviate that by using materials we know we can get. But it's, you know, the problem with today is you just can't tell, you know?
Let me add something here, too. In the meetings with ARB, too, the hope was that we were going to be able to use the existing structure, and the company in Germany does have a roof. Right now, it's a vinyl roof. We could go to a metal roof, and they've got that in Germany. The issue with ARB is they don't want a gabled roof, and we could have put some brick on the outside and could have taken the existing structure and made it nicer, but ARB went down the path of, we want you to change it, basically, and we want a flat roof, and we want an entrance from High Street. So they're the ones that have really dictated the process and what they've wanted, which is basically getting rid of the original structure, which is significant. I mean, pulling those concrete footers out of the ground is significant. You know, so that's not our preference, but, you know, the prize for the restaurant is this. It's been a game changer for the business. Tucci's has been an institution down there for 25 years, and if the structure, long-term, is in the best interest of the business and the city, I'm very supportive of that. I mean, it's, you know, people think I'm a little crazy, spending all this money. They don't think, my regulars don't think I have a problem right now. They think I'm crazy to take that thing down and spend $750,000 fixing a problem I don't have. They think I'm nuts. I'm going to do it because I need, for the business, long-term, covering that patio is in the best interest of the business. So I'm willing to make that investment, and ARB has been the one that is dictating kind of starting from scratch, which takes time and money.
Any other comments?
I have a question. So Jenny, from where the application is now, it sounds like you had a chart up here, they're coming back in March.
We were, again, hoping that that was going to be the timeframe. I think they're going to need a little more time based on the feedback that they outlined in terms of the preliminary and the final development plan. We're allowing those to be combined. ARB is supportive of that so that we're not prolonging their application, but that's a significant amount of detail that they have to provide between those informal review to that submission and our review.
So you're saying the earliest that could realistically happen would be April?
Yeah.
April possibly, maybe, likely May, and it has to do with the design and the engineering that have to be done to get to a final plan, which is, you know, 80% in terms of all that rather than maybe 50% at preliminary. So we're going to combine them. It adds a little time upfront, but probably saves some time on the back end.
So one other, just final question. So if, let's say, come May or June, you could take that structure down, enjoy the summer on that patio, and begin your, in October. I mean, I don't understand why the patio would have to stay open till I mean, I don't understand why the patio would have to stay open till October. I mean, if you knew in May you had the final and that was agreed, and now, now you're doing it, why not take it down, enjoy the summer on the patio, and then if you want to wait till October to get it all done, you get it done? I don't know why it has to stay up all summer.
Because my, my reservation policy will have to change, I'm going to upset a ton of my regulars, and, and then the, the business will experience hardship. So, so if, if the tent is already going to come down, what does it matter to the city whether it's three months from now or six months from now? So, you know, having a roof over that patio and actually being able to control the, the rain that comes in there, I'm able to take those reservations that comes down, which is going to come down eventually anyway, what does it matter whether it's three months from now or six months from now?
So Jenny, this, this regulation is for the entire city, it's not for just, we're talking about an extension for the entire city. So, I mean, I, I think the, the issue is here, it's not just this, we're, we're talking about, we, we had a regulation, we ended it, extending the entire cities for this. And that, this is why I'm asking this question.
Okay.
Is there's been a period of time, I totally get that you have to get through the whole process, but you get through the process, then take it down, and then you're, you're, you're doing what the rest of the city has done. That's the question I'm asking. So, thank you.
You know, if you were to take the structure down in May, you're going to have to get, you have to get heavy equipment in there, take it all down. What's the patio going to look like after that?
There's going to be extensive work with, obviously, the brick. When that piece of equipment comes from the 745, the wrought iron fence, your brick sidewalk, all that landscape just gets totally wiped out. So there's going to be fixing all that up, which is going to, you know, it'll take a couple of weeks to clean all that up. So I'm already going to go through that hardship anyway, when, when it comes eventually down. And that's why, whether it happens in May or October, when the construction starts, I'm saying, why go through the hardship in May if it's already going to go through it in October?
You know, I guess what my colleagues were thinking about, and was, okay, so you tear this thing down in May, and then you have this open patio and you use it. But actually, what you're telling us is, "I need the roof over the top because it continues my business because it blocks the rain." And that's why you really want to take it down in October, because otherwise, you're going to have a semi-demosite, it's going to be screwed up, and, and you're also going to have to cancel all your reservations when it rains outside. So you're saying, so what you're saying to us is, "Can I leave my roof up until October?"
Correct. So stop, stop taking reservations is a major deal. But if you can't control your outside, you cannot take reservations.
Right, I get it.
I got to tell all those people that I took reservations and made them happy, now I got to change my policy.
Right.
That's not, that's not going to go over real well.
Okay.
You know, the, the way I look at it is, I mean, to me, it's, it's, I understand that, I think you are the last one that has a temporary structure up. And even though it's for the whole city, there is only one left. And we're not going to put more temporary structures up. I personally, if I'm just looking at common sense, to have you tear it down in May, tear up the patio, replace the patio, then go three months later, tear up the patio again, what you've already replaced. And, and personally, I think we give incentives to businesses to do something special, you know, to improve their business. I think three months is not a huge ask, to just let him go on doing his work. And we, we know the process is our city process, it's taking time. If we didn't have the ARB process, you'd probably have this thing up faster. So since we're delaying you by a process, I think a give of three months is not a lot to ask. So I would be for allowing you to do it October 1st.
And I would be committed, too. I mean, October's not the magical date. If, if I could build this thing in May, or July, or August, the soon as I can put that thing up, I will. If I can get through this process earlier, I'll start earlier. But I think, you know, as we looked at the, the plan and the process, October 1st seemed to be the likely date.
So Jenny, just another question. So if this gets approved, then another restaurant could put up a temporary tent between now and October, is that correct?
They could, then they would have to comply with the same timeframe. Same with patio, we've had areas where people have their patios outside of their approved areas, they would be allowed to have those similarly.
So Jane, it, it may not be today, but we're, again, this is, this is not just, the reason I'm asking the question, this is not just for this one instance. We are talking about legislation across the city. So, and, and what assurances would we have that this thing gets approved in May, or June, or?
Again, yeah, I don't, yeah.
We don't. And so that, again, I, I think there would have to be some, I struggle with not doing something for a May timeframe which would allow us to get through the process. I'm struggling with that because now, we're extending this, we're extending it for the entire city, possibly. We're doing that for not three months, but for, what is October from now? Nine months. Nine months. So, anyway, that's, that's the reason for hesitation not to be, but the ramifications, if you will, are for citywide here as we're having this, and I just want to be sure we're clear about that.
Do you mind if I ask a question? So can you, can you remind us how you operated prior to this structure going up in the summertime?
So as far as how I operate on the patio? Okay, well, yeah.
So my point is, I guess it's a loaded question. It was an open patio, right?
That's right. So the way we operated it before is, we had to hire a new staff every, every summer. So this was the hardship the business went through.
Right.
In order, in order to double your capacity in a restaurant, I would have to probably anywhere from 15 to 20 new servers. The, the magic number in my restaurant now, with the patio being covered, is I have six managers. I have three back of the house, I have a chef and two sous chefs that are salary managers, and I have one general manager and two assistants. When that patio closes, that goes down to a four manager, sometimes to a three to a four manager.
I understand that. I guess where I'm headed is, if, if you were running a open patio like you did before?
Yes.
You could still keep the staff and operate kind of like you are now?
I could, yes.
Then my, my other question is, the, the structures in the ground that you put in, what do you call them?
The beams, the metal, or I'm sorry, the steel foundations, the actual columns.
Foundations, right. So the foundations are poured outside the original footprint of the, of the patio, are they not? So if the structure were removed off of the patio, you would still have the original patio footprint that you could operate on through the summer, as you did prior to all of this starting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just, I just want my council to understand that, that, and, and all I'm getting at is construction sequencing here, because it's only fair they understand how that works. So if you were to remove the structure and go back to operating a patio as you always did before, you could still, you could, you could still make it through the summer.
I could, I could, but I will.
But you don't have to tear out those foundations until you're ready to actually build whatever new structure is going to be on there.
Well, the beams have, the beams have to be removed, and those actual, there's a 14-inch grade from the building down to the sidewalk. So, yeah, those things are going to, those columns do stick out of the ground.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that wouldn't, that wouldn't prevent you from running, that wouldn't prevent you, I, I guess what I was hearing earlier, and I just want to be absolutely clear, those foundations that hold the poles.
Yep.
If those poles were removed, those foundations stayed, does not prohibit you from running the patio as you, as you did previously, correct? Is that correct?
The eye source, though, I mean, I, you know, those would be.
You can put planners on them. I'm not trying to guide anyone to a decision, I'm just trying to get them to understand the effect of that. Because what I heard was, and I just want to make sure this is clear, is that the foundations must be removed in order to run a patio operation. That makes it sound like the foundations were poured in the middle of the patio, and they were not. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
That's a good point, because remember, the, I lost some, I lost some square footage out there. So you're right, though, actually, those footers would run into, not in the middle, but that, we did lose, I wouldn't say quite a bit, but I did lose some of that seating out there because, remember, we had some trees that were on the front of the patio. So I did lose probably 20 seats out there. So where those footers are, are, I would actually seat beyond those footers, which doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right. I, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, this patio operated in the open before this structure went in, and that I'm trying to understand the construction sequencing and how that would keep it from going back to as it normally was and allowing you to operate through the summer, or until such a time you're ready to undertake construction, and at some point, it's all going to be tore up and built for the new permanent structure.
I agree that after approving the patio, the structure on May 1st, I will be able to, to operate the patio as it was before. But again, then we're going to change our current policies out there, and it's not going to be a seamless transition, and there's going to be more hardship out there. And again, a lot of, a lot of my guests, who now for the last year, believe me, and it's been, it's been unbelievable, the, the amount of goodwill we've created out there, because one of the, one of the worst things we had was not taking reservations because people would cry, and seriously, every night yell at somebody, "Why don't you take reservations out there?" Well, we can't, because if we have a party of eight out there and it rains at 5 o'clock, we can't see each other inside, we're booked reservations in here. So it was a, it was a very precarious situation for us. Now that we have a structure, a roof over that patio, and we changed that policy, we don't argue with people anymore, and people love what we're doing. I think we're going to take that down and operate the old way would be hardship for the business. Knowing that we're going to build a structure out there in October doesn't make a lot, it doesn't make a lot of sense, Dana.
Now, I'm not suggesting it does, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure this council understands what existed before, and could, what could operate if you just took the structure off versus this construction sequencing? That's all I'm trying to do. And in fairness to, to this whole decision process, you know, this, this, I guess what I don't want to have happen to this city council, or me for that matter, is that our residents are upset because an expectation was built that wasn't given or allowed to begin with. And so, you know, there was a time we were saying, "Got to be ready, got to cut that off, got to, it's coming, it's coming." And now, I think what I'm hearing is there's a lot of commitment and expectation going beyond a date that was permitted. I'm all about you, brother, having, personally, but I, I think it's a great thing that's happened down there, and the people love it, and I, I know, I've been down there myself, it's a great thing, and everyone's enjoying it. I'm just trying to make sure there's no misinterpretation of, of where these decisions were lying.
No, and I do, like, and I, Dana, you, and city council, allowing that thing to go up was, was very fortunate for me, and, 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 believe me, thank you. But, you know, this whole thing has evolved. I had no idea this would be this successful, and I will tell you, I'm the only business that took this risk. I don't think anybody else built a $400,000 structure in Dublin, Ohio, that's, that's been met with this kind of success, or, or people raving about the place and going there as a destination. I mean, I, unless I'm, I'm wrong, did anybody else build a $400,000 structure with acoustical tiles and landscape in it, right on the street with all the glass? And, you know, so I, I knew I took the risk, and I know we talked about this, that I was eventually going to have to make sure that I went through the process to get this permanently approved. But I think I'm in a different situation from these other businesses that didn't do this, so I'm in a very unique situation.
Right, and, and I know the mayor's going to cut me off, but I'll just say this one last thing. I, I don't think anyone argues that, that the outcome far exceeded just trying to respond to an emergency condition, and as a result, something great has come out of it, and a lot of good lessons learned, and a great opportunity. So thank you for the investment in what you did during a very tough time. I'm glad it's worked out for the business. No one wants to see the business get ruined. So, I, Mayor, thanks for letting me jump in, I just wanted to clarify some of those things. Thank you.
I would be supportive of an extension till June 1st or so. I, I think that's, you know, given you navigating the ARB process, I think that's appropriate. I, I'm not sure what the reference is to three months. October is a long, a lot longer than three months from any point that we have talked about, but I think, I think a June 1st is reasonable and something that we can be supportive of and helpful, and you can open up your patio, and it can operate as it did, as it always has. And then, you know, in response to making that investment, hopefully, on the other side of that, you'll have a great return on that additional $750,000 investment you make there.
You know, I think, you know, it depends on, are you buying the stuff from Germany part of this, or, no, the engineering, or? Okay. My take on this is, you know, from what I understand from your architect, this thing has not been resolved as far as the structural part. Now, I do applaud the fact that you took the initiative during COVID, which was a big imposition on all businesses, and you survived, and you were clever, and you were hardworking, and you actually made this thing work for yourself, which is very, and when you look at how many restaurants went under, and you survived, and, but you, you know, a lot of people didn't go out and jump out and take the risk. So I, I really, I, I think that's fantastic. And it turned out to be a very positive amenity to, to the city. So, you know, I don't know, I guess I agree with the mayor, I don't see why extending this for another three months, if you're committed, and I don't know if we need documentation that you're going to build this thing or not, but it's got to be built. So, and, you know, the fact that you survived, this whole COVID thing is pretty phenomenal, being in the restaurant business, because Hen's Quarter is now closed down, and, you know, the rest of them, it's been tough. I've had people down in Broad Street say, "Hey, we're going to move out of here," and, you know, so you rush in during COVID and try to eat as many meals as you could just to keep them alive. So, I don't know. I don't see a problem with giving you extra three months.
Yeah, what?
Well, I mean, till October, instead of cutting him off in June, and, yeah, only because most of these restaurants have suffered huge losses. And if it means that he's got a roof over his restaurant, and he's got reservations he can take, that's sort of really important. If we got him sitting outside on the patio, and it's raining, he might have some umbrellas, but his business gets choppy. So, you know, and what Dana says, true, the extension, the extension, the extension sort of bother me, but I also understand, you know, you got to, you got to hold the company together, and, you know, you, you've tried that, so.
Jenny?
The decision to invest $400,000 in a temporary structure is on you, it's not on us. However, I want to support your business. It's a gem for the city. A lot of the restaurants that have failed have failed because people don't want to eat there. The restaurants that people want to eat at are doing just fine, and you're one of them. It's kind of yours to screw up, honestly, and your patrons that have said, "What, you know, why are you doing this?" I would ask the same question, because, but you want more capacity, I get that. I'm in favor, I'm supportive of June 1st. It's kind of a compromise, but anything beyond that, I can't support.
I would say I support the June as well, but I would actually extend it to whatever the day after the Memorial Tournament's done, because everyone puts up temporary tents for St. Patrick's Day and Memorial, so it'd be like June 6th, or whatever the Monday is. But then I think it, you know, by then, too, you'll have your final, you should have your final approvals through ARB, you'll know exactly, maybe you, hopefully you can start early in August or September, who knows? But then, everyone's on the same playing field, so all of our, it's not just you, again, that's getting the extension. And so everyone who has their tent for Memorial or whatever, everything comes down the day after is what I would support.
I'm glad you said that, Amy, that was exactly what I was going to say, is after Memorial Tournament is over. And I could be very supportive of that, and, you know, I'm, I'm really, hopefully that gives you enough time also to plan for not taking reservations over the summer months, unless, of course, you get everything approved. I'm not worried about, about it getting approved, it's either going to get approved or not approved, the, the temporary structure has to come down either way. So that part of it doesn't, doesn't really play into my, my thought process. So whatever that, Monday or the weekend after Memorial is over, I could, I could definitely support that, and, and hopefully we can get them through the process as fast as possible.
So I have one question for you, Dana. Temporary structures that were to go up, like, let's say if someone, if we extend this to June 1st, or whatever the date we decide, someone can just put up a temporary structure without permission? Or do they have to have permission?
No, they'd still need to come and apply to us, so we would review it. But, but you're extending that opportunity to everyone.
Right.
But, I mean, they would still need to come to us, we need to review it, and.
And the only, well, the only reason we did, the only reason that we did the temporary structures is because of the pandemic, but right now, we're not really facing that. So basically, you're the last guy with a temporary structure. My concern is, you take it down June 1st, you got construction on the street in the middle of a patio season on South High Street, and I don't want to see added construction on South High Street to take something down with heavy equipment and shut down another guy's restaurant. So I'm, I'm still very strongly thinking, you've made a big investment, you've, you've created a very successful restaurant, three months, it's been up, it's not, it's not a piece of canvas that looks like a teepee, it looks like a structure. I still believe that giving you that three months means that we would reduce the amount of construction on South High Street until, until the summer season's over, but.
Okay, I guess I haven't weighed in, everybody else has weighed in. I would, I would say, I, I think it's fair to be equal footing for all the other restaurants who have outdoor spaces in the summer, so I would say the Memorial as well. That would be my say, so. That would be my say, so.
Let's find the extension until date. I'm hearing after the memorial is the major.
It would be June 6th.
June 6th.
And I mean, you gotta give them a minute to get the thing down too. So, I mean, so they have, they have time, like as long as they start taking it down that, at that point, like it does, or does it have to be completed down?
I think our previous language was it was completely down. We can look at a reasonable timeframe when we bring this legislation back to you to formally vote on to see what that looks like.
Yeah, because I wouldn't want to say that they'd have to have it completely down the Monday after the memorial because then they're taking it down during the memorial, kind of defeats the purpose. So something reasonable in that timeframe so that they've got enough time to get the thing down.
The motion is to direct the city manager to draft legislation to provide an extension in the duration. So I think you probably have enough information for that. So with that, I don't see why we couldn't call the roll.
I, I agree.
Uh, do I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Jenny?
Mr. Reiner. Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Am Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Ms. Saluto.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Appreciate it.
Um, tax reclassification of positions, staff report, Kevin.
Good evening, council. I'm the director of taxation and I'm available to discuss the next item for proposal and consideration. This item is as referenced in the memo recommending the reclassification of two part-time full-time tax positions, the accounting specialist and accounting assistant, open positions into one full-time accounting specialist position and the division of taxation. Primarily this proposal is being made to make the new full-time position with benefits more attractive to potential new hires and would come in a slightly lower budgetary cost. Are there any questions for this item?
Any questions?
Good on you, saving money, like it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your consideration. I urge your approval.
All right. Lindsay, is there any public? I didn't think, I saw her. Okay, we need, uh, a motion to approve the classification, uh, reclassification of the two permanent part-time positions into one full-time position in the tax division. May I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Saluto.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Am Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Dana, your staff report?
Good evening, members of council. As Kirby's bringing this up, I want to just give you, make you aware of a, um, a lease opportunity that's been presented to the city. And I wanted to kind of walk you through that real quick and get some guidance as to whether you're interested in this or not. Go ahead to the next slide, Kirby. This, this involves 63 South High Street. You may have seen the rental sign in front of it. You may also know this property is the Richards property. If it called, uh, the Richards family has a long history. This, this home has been in the family for a genera, a couple of generations now. Uh, Jim Richards, a former Grand Leprechaun and member of our, I think our, um, historical society and so forth was, um, grew up in this house and told lots of stories about it. And I think you're familiar with it. It's on South High Street, um, generally at the corner of Everly and, and South High. Uh, the picture on the left is the house and, uh, the picture on the right is simply the garage, two-car garage located in the rear of the house. Uh, it's about, it's about 600 square feet, I think is the amount. It's, it's not very big. Uh, anyway, next slide. So my question to you this evening is should the city lease 63 South High Street for the purpose of beta testing pop-up shops, which would incorporate rotating vendors and artists and promote viability and pedestrian circulation on South High Street? Next slide. So, uh, just wanted to raise on the left there, um, the, the South High Street vitality. This was, um, one of the recommendations that was brought forward by the Historic District Task Force. I understand that you continue to, um, assess those recommendations and consider them. I'm bringing this ahead of that just because this is an opportunity I just want to make sure you're aware of before that opportunity were to be missed if you would choose to go forward with the recommendation. On the right is just simply Dana grabbing pictures off the internet to show sort of a pop-up retail. But I showed this one because it just, it shows generally how you can set something up in an existing building and move on. And next slide, uh, pop-up shops, what are they? You can all research this on your own, uh, looking, you can Google it or look into it. I've been watching this now for about three or four years in terms of what pop-up shops are or pop-up retail as it's referred to. These can include retail, art, music, museums, food, and anything else that you might consider appropriate for pop-up use. They're generally short-term uses to minimize risk to the person, the vendor or to the artist or whoever would use it, the opportunity to test products. Sometimes these are in the form of e-commerce products where they're generally available online, but people don't get to touch and feel the product, so to speak. So then, um, these can give opportunities to, for people to come and see those products and interact with them or just provide a mix of interests. Um, what I would be proposing here, and I'll get into this more in a second, is free access to vendors, artists to generate interest and promote circulation in the district. Next slide. So to pursue the historic, historic district task force recommendation and economic development beta test, as I would consider it, uh, we would lease the Richards house for one year. They've offered a one-year lease, I think at a reduced rate as well, to test this pop-up shop concept. Uh, again, pop-ups can include farmer's market type vendors that would not be in competition with adjacent merchants and artists. So in other words, I wouldn't want to put a cupcake vendor across the street from the cupcakery or something like that. We'd want to be very sensitive about that. The Dublin Arts Council can provide artists as vendors and/or displays. Uh, we did take David Guion with us when we went and toured the building and he did come back and respond with he could provide a number of artists that would be interested in, in doing sort of a pop-up opportunity there. He actually specifically mentioned 48, but I, I, you know, it just depend on how often you would want to rotate those. Uh, there are room for four vendors at a time, two in the house and two in the garage, uh, depending on how you'd want to set that up. The backyard could provide additional space for vendor music and/or other possible small venue attractions as the historic task force alluded to, but you know, that's, you'd have to be awfully sensitive about that because you have resonance immediately behind it. So that's something that we'd have to be careful of. It would promote pedestrian circulation in the district and would help to assess if such cases can be viable in the south part of the district and/or, uh, other locations. Next slide. So the cost of the program, I'm estimating total cost would be $50,000 a year. The lease option is at, I put $3,250 because that would also include utility costs. Uh, there is no additional insurance costs as we're self-funded. We would simply add that to our, our list of assets and it would be covered. Uh, very little tenant fit up is required. Uh, we took the chief building official, Brad Figrel with us. We looked at it. The rear door on the building is, appears to be wide enough for ADA compliance. Um, the walls are extremely thick, so you wouldn't want to have to go in and make that wider, but appears it meets ADA compliance. If you look at the rear of the house, very small ramp would be, is all you would need to accommodate ADA compliance and you would provide one ADA parking space in the driveway. Uh, the lesser is willing to provide all that change and simply put into the lease rate. The staff cost, I would estimate at about 40 hours of event and/or economic development, staff coordination, uh, spread over the course of the year, uh, 10 hours of social marketing and promotion by, um, our C, um, communications and public information division. This is really social media promoting, uh, I think once you set it up, it's just reloading the change of vendors and sending it back out. It's not a significant undertaking. The materials cost about a thousand dollars for banners, signboard material. And again, I'm, I'm putting $10,000 in there for the Dublin Arts Council cost. This would just be for their time to help. I don't, David has not asked for anything. He said he could support this, but I, I plug that in there as a possibility for staff time. And then source of funds would be under our economic development incentive account within the existing budget. Next slide. This is not intended to be a revenue generating beta test or seeking offsetting costs. The purpose of the project would be to, again, test the viability and impact of pop-up shops in the district, provide an event opportunity to increase activities in accordance with the historic district task force recommendations, bring vitality or increase pedestrian circulation to the southern portion of the district and promote local products, e-commerce product testing and artists. Next slide. So the policy question again, really the bottom line is would you be interested in leasing 63 South High Street for this purpose? Be happy to answer any questions, Maya.
Any thoughts? Questions?
Um, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So Dana, um, in, in terms of viability of this, um, do, do you feel that you, I mean, have, has there been interest in pop-ups coming to that area? Like, how did this even, how the whole concept come about? Were you approached? Um, I, I just am not sure that there'll be enough vendors to want to do pop-up shops i- in this particular spot. Um, it, it's a pretty small space. Um, you know, I, I've seen pop-up shops, I've seen them down in the Gateway District, um, in Columbus, um, and, and they can, they, they can provide some, um, uh, as you, as you say, viability and pedestrian circulation. Um, I just, I don't know how much and I'm, I'm curious about that because it's, you know, it's 60-ish grand plus staff time.
Yeah, here's the whole concept. So the historic task force said, look, we'd like, they'd like to see more, um, walking around south of High Street. I'd like to see more interest down there. We have a Dora. Uh, I'll be blunt, people go to Dora, you buy a drink and you sit on a bench. There's really not much going on. There's a few shops to the north, a couple to the south, not always open, um, in the evening hours, uh, this sort of thing. If you just provided a storefront opportunity for people to, it's a place to walk to, a place to look and see, if you change it out routinely, that's the whole idea between pop-up retail. This is not something I pulled out of the air. We studied it a couple of years ago. I talked to folks at Easton about pop-up retail a few years ago. Um, they, they felt that it's, they're doing it over there and have been, and there's other places in Columbus where they've done it. Um, there's just varying amounts of success with it. It could fail, to be blunt. Um, but then again, if, if you're rotating it, I think the interesting thing is people at least go and look at something. No offense to, I'm going to pick on candlestick makers just because I'm just trying to think it's pick anything, right? But if you have that candlestick maker that's always there and, and it's always there, then everyone knows it's there. Uh, but if you're rotating something out, be it an artist and a vendor, which could be from, we could seek vendors, I've talked to Cohatch in the past. They have vendors and, and maker spaces and all their different sites that are spread really around Ohio. They're always trying to get their products to market. So that, that could be a source of a pop-up. All of the farmer's market vendors could be, not all of them, but some of them could be opportunities for pop-up because they only get that chance on a Saturday. Maybe that product works and people would like to see it more often. Um, and then you add that with an artist or two and you just have a mix of things and you rotate it every couple of weeks or once a month or whatever. And people might say, oh, well, let's go, let's walk down to South High Street because somebody different is going to be there. That's just kind of the big thought behind it. Be better if you had two or three or four of those maybe sprinkled up and down the street, but you don't know whether that can work or not unless you just maybe start with one. So that was the idea behind the thought.
Comment, um, I don't, my answer to this is no, I think, because I just see it as a commercial, like it just seems to me like a commercial venture that needs a business plan that needs laid out of how you could make money on it. I just don't see how the city would get involved in a commercial business.
Well, we're not. I, it's kind of like a mini farmer's market, you know, uh, one, you know, in the evening. It's really, and we're not out to make money in farmer's markets, the city doesn't, but we allocate spaces, be they public spaces or what have you. It's, it's a similar concept. We're just plugging it into a, into a building. It's, it's the same kind of thing. And does it generate interest? Look, I'm going to be blunt, I'm not trying to sell you on this. I just want you to know there's an opportunity and we've been approached and if you want the opportunity, it's there. If not, it's, it's, it's fine with us. But I also think that, um, this was part of a historic district task force recommendation. I'm just trying to be responsive to that as well.
Um, we've talked about strategies to try to get activity pulled south. North High doesn't have any issues. There's plenty of activity there, but the South High Street side, um, has been blighted and there's improvements coming. 3032, I think is, uh, has been approved to have some work done. And so that's directly across from DBT. Um, you, you don't know until you try. That's my attitude and it's, it's $50,000. It's not a huge investment. Um, and I think Dana's analogy to the farmer's market is a good one. Frankly, there are a lot of vendors that go to the farmer's market that I wish were in Dublin, that I could visit anytime. Um, so, you know, you start small, see if it works. It's one year. If it doesn't work out, we give it a shot.
I, I would argue that, that taxpayers would think $50,000 of a gamble to see if something would work is probably, they're not going to argue that, that's not a little amount, I don't think.
Well, a comment that I was going to make, um, earlier when we were talking about metro places, um, a lot of our residents don't understand where all the amenities we have come from and who pays for it. If you pay $10,000 a year in property taxes, $200 goes to the city. That doesn't even pay for my trash pickup. So it's economic activity, it's visitors to the city, it's people buying things in shops and eating at Dublin Village Tavern and other businesses down there that pays, it pays for itself. But we don't know until we try. With the metro place, it's kind of a, a situation of you got to be careful what you wish for. If we don't do something, that Max and Irma's could be a Cracker Barrel or a Golden Corral. I don't think we want that. So, you know, there are things that we need to be doing as council members, as leaders, that are best for the city in the big picture. And residents don't always, aren't able always to connect the dots because they don't have all the information we have.
You know, um, I look at this as retail incubator space. We incubate a lot of other kinds of IT and that sort of thing. Retail is something that we're having a really hard time attracting. Part of it is, is that the rents down there in the historic district are only affordable to the law, the attorney's offices and the title agencies, but we don't, we're not incentivizing real, retail, but we all want it. So if we want it, we're going to have to incentivize it somehow. And the way to do that is we're not, but we bought the Dublin Tavern as an incubator space for a restaurant. It was very successful. Cohatch, we gave incubator money for them to do maker spaces. We're not getting a lot of maker spaces, but we gave them that incentive to do that. I think that, you know, to lease something and to try it for a year might prove to be a really successful thing. The, um, the, I know I talked to Molly over at the North Market, um, earlier this summer when we were talking, when Dana was talking about pop-up spaces. And many of the North Market vendors, or not the North Market, but the farmer's market vendors really want to continue to have a place to go, um, instead of just Saturday morning. So these are opportunities that's going to drive a little bit of interest and this is a prime location because it's between the Dublin Tavern and coast. So it fills up a little void there and causes people to move down the street a little farther. Then the chamber's finishing off, so maybe we can kind of get some energy to happen down South High Street. It's a small amount of money to use as an economic incentive, which we haven't really used to try to, to, to try to get retail. And you, because we're not charging or the suggestion would be not to charge, you're going to get plenty of people in there. And you might find some people who do very well and then open up another business on South High Street. So I think it's a great idea and I'd love to see it happen.
Uh, I, I don't necessarily disagree with the concept. I think that's good. I think this facility is a tough lend to this kind of space just because of the residential nature of the way that it's laid out with, without doing significant work to the interior nature of the way that it's laid out without doing significant work to the interior of the building. I think the renovations to 3032 would, that building would lend itself well to this kind of activity, I think, more so than this. My only hesitation is the building itself and the constraints that, that are inherent with, you know, a 1940s, single-family home. I just don't know how much you can get in, how much can happen in that small space.
Just to respond to that, Chris, one of the things that makes this space interesting is it was built like 1845, and it's such a historically interesting little place that I think part of the, you know, the attraction of it is that it's so historical.
Yeah, by the time you fill it up with enough stuff for people to look at, I'm not sure they'll appreciate it, but.
So, I have a question. Do people pay to participate in the farmer's market?
I don't know that answer. I'd have to check and get back to you. There may be a fee to Crawford-Hawing to do that.
There is, I'm looking ahead, there is, I would think there was a fee, right? So, you sort of, my question is, we aren't going to solve the retail problem. We're not. That this is not something, I think if, if there was a magic formula, a lot of these small communities and large communities would have figured it out. So, to me, I'd be supportive of it under a sort of a couple sort of thoughts here. And one is that about halfway through, we have a touch point, and we'd say to ourselves, okay, we get to the end of this period, either we keep doing it, or it closes down, or is there, what have we learned halfway through to say, is there a possibility for somebody to run this type of a business? Because, and/or, we tested something where someone could come every other month or something because in order for them to know, they're not going to really have a viable business if they're, if they're in there for two weeks. They're, they're just not going to know that unless they get the lucky two weeks in July versus the unlucky two weeks in January, right? So, I mean, you know, I just think, to me, I don't have a problem trying something, but I think we have to have some, some, at the end of this, what would we like to see happen? And I think I would like us to be able to articulate that at the end of this, we'd like to see somebody continue that on, not the city, right? We shouldn't be in this business forever. And/or, we've tested two or three models, and we could then present to somebody what we learned. Because I just think at the end of this, it won't be an ongoing concern. I just don't think we're going to be, we won't solve this retail. So, I would be okay with it if, if we had a sort of a mid-year touch point, and we had some hypothesis that we could present to somebody to do something with it at the end, because that's the vitality you want more than one thing.
Yeah. Just on that note, that's very much the reason why I was proposing a call to one-year lease, but it'd be for this, but by the time you got this up and running, you'd probably be April, you'd probably run through November, and you'd shut it down, then you'd evaluate. It doesn't contemplate an ongoing lease, it's just for that timeframe. So, you're really talking about probably an eight or nine-month timeframe to test. I'm really careful with my words. This is a beta test for that very reason. And hence, use economic development, a lot of Main Street programs, folks like that actually do spend money to try to incentivize and to promote, you know, this sort of thing in their, in their, I pick on Main Street as an example, where it's a very coordinated effort, where community improvement corporations and/or cities, depending on how it's set up, would, would do this kind of stuff to try to promote the vibrancy of its, of its district.
I'm still struggling with it a little bit, but I'd be, I'd be willing to give it that try if there's, you know, sort of metrics and a report out and say, hey, here's what we found. Here's, here's how we either recommend going forward or not. And I'd be willing to give it that try. We'll, we'll see how it goes. I just, to me, the space is a little concerning, and certainly the winter months when we basically are paying rent for nothing is a little bit bothersome, but I get it. I get it. We'll see if the theory, you know, pans out.
Well, thanks for that, and that certainly was what we would do. And to Councilmember Cram's point, this thing could fail in three months, and then you're going to be sitting there going, okay, well, that was, but, I mean, I totally get that perspective. So, I'll have to sit here, she can laugh at me if it fails, but I, I'm not sitting here, but I'm going to put it on the record, I'm not promising that it's going to work either.
My question is, even if it works, why, I mean, what works? I mean, what do we get out of it?
Well, I'm going to answer that and say.
All we're doing is spending $50,000 to advertise so someone can come buy this guy's house.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with the thing you just said, but I, but I am also just saying.
I just don't like the idea.
Okay. I'm not trying to sell you on it.
Do you, I mean, do we have a majority of people here that feels like it's worth a beta test here? I may ask. Can I see you raise your hands here? Do we have four?
Yeah, I would do it again, I would just, let's test a few things so that at the end we.
Right.
Yeah. And I know that's the plan.
Yeah. Right. One of the things I know that, by doing a little research on this, is that these smaller spaces are very attractive. They did it in some of the other cities where they incentivized us, and things like Lululemon, all kinds of places like that, they're just looking for a space to do something really unique and different. And one of the things that makes this attractive is that you're getting some mix of uses in the Historic District instead of just food. That's all we have. We just have food. Council committee reports.
Okay, so I'll take that as it's okay to do that. Is that correct? Okay.
Looks like you have four.
Just making sure.
All right. Administrative committee. Kathy? Are we, are you done? Are you, do you, if, oh, I don't want to.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, though. Happy Valentine's Day.
Kathy? Administrative committee?
Okay, great. We met, I don't have the date in front of me here, on February the 2nd. Thank you. I do have the date in front of me. We covered a few things. Let me just make a couple of quick points. We continue to have conversation with staff, CPI, about council and community engagement, and we're making some progress. A work plan is going to come back to council with some ideas, so stay tuned for that. We spent a fair bit of time also talking about the role of the newly contemplated, you know, council member liaisons to boards and commissions. And we will come back with a full report to this group on February 28th. You will receive a written document. In that document, and at the meeting, we discussed a couple of things. What would the goals look like for a liaison? How would it be the liaison committee work? You know, how often would they meet? That type of thing. And then, we also discussed which boards and commissions that we thought at the time that a liaison would make sense for, and that the thought would be maybe planning and zoning and ARB to begin with. But I'm, just for the sake of time, I'm being very abbreviated, but there will be a full report come out for staff. You guys will get this ahead of the 28th meeting. We'll have a chance to discuss that at the 28th meeting. And then, staff, the committee asked the staff, what would be the appropriate place to reflect what, how we complete this description and roles and responsibilities of this group? And that, that would become part of the council rules of order. That addition, of course, then would take a resolution on our part. So, look for a memo. We will discuss it during this time at our next meeting, and then on the March 7th, with people's feedbacks and comments, we will bring that forth for a resolution. Then, just two other quick notes from an admin perspective. Our retreat is coming up because we don't have anything else to do. We have retreats coming up in March, and thank you all. Had an opportunity to speak with almost all of you about retreat agenda items, so look forward to that. And then, also, we are going to put some time on the calendar, of your calendars, to talk about board and commission appointments, because those will also have to take place in March. So, stay tuned, we've got a, we've got a lot of work. But thanks to the committee, we had a, we had a good discussion and look for the memo. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. John? Community development?
See you on the 22nd.
Christina? Finance?
Nothing this time. We meet in March.
Amy? Public services?
We don't meet until Wednesday.
All right. Council roundtable? Anything? Nope? All right. Well, oh.
I had a couple things. I'll try to be brief, but I did promise you all that I would give you a brief, very brief summary. I went to the National Association of Regional Councils, sadly acronymed NARC, conference, and just wanted to give a really brief synopsis of, you know, the $10 billion in ARPA funds that are available for broadband infrastructure is now ineligible use as determined. So, I think it's worth trying to go after some money that we might be able to garner in that fashion. One of the big takeaways from that is the difficulties in navigating the federal and state regulations on funding opportunities, and I'm sympathetic to Mr. Stifler and the, and navigating those waters. But everything that I heard there really validated the things that we're doing and the accounts that we're setting up, and the way that we're applying funds in and out for the city is certainly well done. There was a significant conversation about broadband being in, being the electrification of today, and I think that is really a baton worth carrying for us. And I'll, I said it before, I'll say it again, you know, the bipartisan infrastructure is no longer a bill, it's a law. So, we might as well get, get ourselves ready to participate in those things. And there was a lot of conversation in two things. One is illustrating investments versus expenditures, and it appears that there's a lot more leeway in investments than purely expenditures. So, happy to discuss that if, if anyone is interested in having those conversations. And I think the second part of that is the thought of regionality that was presented. There were several departments from the US government that presented there, and they talked about regionalization of applications. And, you know, we think of regionalization maybe as the entirety of the city of Dublin, or the northwest quadrant of Franklin County, or Morpse's, you know, 15-county area, or whatever. Their definition of a region is by state, and they're looking for applications that would, that the state would carry back to them, because they're really not prepared to have that many individuals come and bring projects. So, we're really going to have to work with a large, our larger group of our region, and that would be considered a state by the federal government, to seek out funding of all of those funds that are available to carry projects forward. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will call this meeting adjourned.